Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Martin Lewis.
His bow and eyes closed in reverence to his utmost his highs. Father God, we come in the name of Jesus just to say thank you for allowing us to gather again, Lord God, to do the work of the city of New Iberia, Lord God. Thank you for working through us, Lord God. Thank you for the vision leadership we have and the vision council that we have, Lord God. Lord God, we ask that you bless each and every citizen of this community as well as the people in attendance tonight, Lord God. Continue to protect us from harm and hurt, Lord God. Lord God, and as we go down to New Orleans, Lord God, and take back the title, Lord God, with the Westgate Tigers, Lord God, I ask that you protect those kids and their family. Grant them traveling grace, Lord God, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. We have a public comment tonight. I would like to just say that there's no back and forth. We just listen. This is the time, I ask you to put your cellphones on vibrate. And, Madam Clerk? Item one, public comment.
Randy Duhaun to discuss Agenda Item Number 5A.
I thought I was gonna speak after the great Pat O'Neilian, but that's okay. I wanted to make a comment about the noise, the new noise, things that you have coming up. I don't know what it is you have in mind, but I live on Indest Street, four houses north of the bayou. You cross Pelicans, bought the bridge, and I live fourth house on the right. The house is well-built, it's well-insulated, and even cars and trucks who have the big manifolds on their cars, it's no big deal to ignore them. But when I hear one of these moving boom boxes, every window in my house starts to rattle. And I have a really sound house. I mean, it's not unnerving, but it's just irritating, very, very irritating. That's all I have to say. I would love some improvement in our noise ordinance, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Pat O'Neilian to discuss Agenda Item Number 5A.
I think you were supposed to say the great Pat O'Neilian.
He's great.
Thank you all for letting me address the council, and Merry Christmas to all of you. I'm glad y'all are reconsidering changing the sound ordinance. I think there's a sort of an in-between land between the sound ordinance and other law-breaking activities. And by that I mean, you know, if somebody's making a sound that's too loud, that's sound. But when they're actually shaking your house and rattling your windows, that's not necessarily just sound. If they came into my house and shook me, that's an assault, and they get sent to jail. He shouldn't be able to send a sound wave into my house and shake me. You feel these sound waves. And we've had this trouble brewing in our neighborhood now for about the last two and a half, three months. And you hear it for a short period of time, rattles your windows, and you go to the window and you look to see if somebody's going down the street, you don't see anything. Well, finally, about two weeks ago, just before Thanksgiving, about just after nine o'clock at night, I went out the front door of my house and I started walking towards the sound. And it played long enough for me to make it down through the Center Street. I live on short weeks. I made it to the Center Street, Old Bank One location, went through the parking lot and went to the front of the truck accessory business over there on Center Street where Doll Romero had his souped-up truck with his big speaker system, playing his system with the bass turned up so loud, it just feels like an earthquake. You feel it. It's not hearing it. Once you hear it, that's sound, but when you feel it, as far as I'm concerned, that's an intrusion into my personal body space. And so, I went there the next day to try to address how we could, you know, resolve some of this. And basically, his response was to call the police and have me thrown out of his business. Okay? Well, fine. Throw me out your business, I have no interest in going in there, but keep your sound waves from shaking my windows. That's a fair trade. So I decided I was gonna put a petition together. I gave all of you a copy of that petition. I went around my neighborhood to try to see what type of range we were talking about. He's projecting this problem as far away as Iberia Street, two and a half blocks. I didn't even go, I bet you they're hearing it at Catherine Cott. They're hearing it at Center Street Elementary, they're hearing it at the nursery on Thompson Street. The nursery signed the petition. We have people beyond Thompson Street hearing this. This is not a civil action. This guy is acting in an uncivil fashion. And so, part of the council's job is to maintain civility. The sound ordinance, to me, should include prohibiting anything that rattles somebody's windows. Because when you're rattling my windows, I have a metal building for a home. What are you doing through the screws on my roof? Are you messing with them? Well, what are those sound waves doing as they pass through my body? Does anybody know? You know? He doesn't have a medical license. He can't perform and experiment on me without me knowing what's going on. So, to me, this needs to be dealt with from an assault standpoint when they're rattling your windows, rather than just a sound disturbance standpoint. And so, that's what I'm here to try to encourage the council to think about tonight when they're considering this ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of November 16th, 2021, as published on December 10th, 2021.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Councilman Martin Lewis and a second by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on our minutes from November 16th? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all. Madam Clerk? 3A.
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-20, authorizing the city of New Iberia, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with respect to economic development projects with the city of New Iberia Economic Development District Number Three and taking other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
A move.
A move by the Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there anyone here that has any public comment on this item? Not seeing or hearing any? I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Thank you all. Now we move on to property standards for A. Madam Clerk?
Revisit the state of buildings located at 515 Daig Street in action. Resolution Number 21-149.
All right, Jim.
This is the third house on Daig Street.
Yep.
October 15th, on Thanksgiving 30 days.
Yes.
And he called on the 14th, so we rescheduled it for tonight to revisit. So, is there anyone here on that property?
Yes, sir. Come on up, please state your name and tell us what you're doing.
My name is Blake Delcum.
Yes, sir.
On this house right here, I spoke to, well, the first time I was aware that it was even passing through the city or whatever, I had a sign on the house. At the time I had the sign on the house, I want to say it was around the 12th that I was notified, I called the number. I spoke to Mr. Jimmy. At that time, he told me they tried to send a certified mail letter to my house. We didn't receive it. He actually said he had it with him. We didn't get it. Later on, he put Ms. Lee's on the phone. She said they sent something through the mail. I didn't receive it. Since then, I have received the letter that she sent for the last meeting. The last meeting y'all had, I was offshore. I told her that I'd come tonight. My thing was the 14th or whenever, 13th was really the first time I knew I was on the timeline. I really had intentions on taking care of this slowly but surely. I didn't know I was on a timeline. I've had an issue with this before. Liz had called me about a building that was kind of in bad shape. I went out there, I tore it down, I removed it off the property. Again, at that time, and this was probably three years ago, never was I told, you know, I was on a timeline to do this. Now, since I was aware of it, she really, truly asked me to do something before, I want to say whatever the meeting before this one was, which was unrealistic for me. I work offshore, I don't work on a schedule. I can go out, I've done as many as a hundred-something days, so, like I said, I do have intentions on doing something with it, removing all the outside siding, removing the roof, doing what I have to do to get it closed up and start to remodel the inside.
All right. Whose district is this?
District Two.
That's what I thought. So, I'm gonna call on you, Marlowe.
Well, I mean, it's simple for me. As, I called Mr. Delcum on, I think it was Monday, Blake, yesterday? And just to see if he was coming tonight? Because initially, the thing that made me give him time initially was the fact that he kept the grass up, so it let me know somebody, you know, was interested in the house, somebody cared a little bit. And so, I didn't know what the contact was. He shared with me what he shared tonight, and I told him, "Come to the council meeting tonight, man, and let us know what his plans were." And, you know, if it's up to me, I'll grant him some more grace, because, I mean, he don't seem like a guy that's trying to run from the city. That's what I looked at. He just don't seem like a guy that's trying to run from his responsibilities. Some miscommunication, and I gotta stand up for the man that owned property that said he gonna fix his house in front of all seven of us, eight of us? You know, I gotta stand up and kind of try to grant him some kind of grace.
Anybody else have any? You finished, Marlowe?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. I'm it, that's it.
Ricky? Mr. Delcum, I appreciate you coming and letting us know you said, but Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, but he did mention that you're gonna remodel the home, correct?
Yes.
So you do, you're aware that you have to get an appraisal and you have to bring it back up to code? Is this structure physically able to bring back up to code?
I'm aware I have to bring it back to code.
But you feel that it is physically capable of bringing it back to code?
I believe so.
I'm just asking.
Yeah. I looked into it a couple of times. They had some guys, you know, it's just, again, never was I aware. I was aware about a situation on the property before, and never did I get contacted about, you know, the timeline it was on. First time I was contacted was when the sign was put on. I addressed it, and, you know, the timeline I was given after I addressed it really was unrealistic for me, because of the short time that I had, you know. I left and it was over 40 days, well, in that little bit of time, it was almost all shot at that time.
You know, I'm just curious to see if you're fully aware of all the rules and regulations that you have to apply to. I'm convinced that you have the reasoning to do something better with it, so we'll see.
Yes, Mr. Broussard?
You have to thank Mr. Marlowe.
That's right. Thank you, man.
He caught, no, he caught the grass. We were about to take it down that day, no, no. He cut the grass, they have somebody with some interest, and Marlowe, you did the right thing. You brought up some ideas. When we're looking at these houses, if it's other things we have to look at before we just tear a house down, we want rooftops, not just tear down. So we in your favor, sir. You're here tonight, you're talking the right talk, but let's figure out how long it'll take to get you there. Mr. Marlowe, what you looking at?
No, I'll let another council member pick one of the shelves.
Anybody else have any comments?
When they're finished.
Okay. Any other council members have any comments? And if not, I'll call on Jeff and...
Well, usually what we're, you know, we don't want to tear down houses. What we want is to have things fixed, but if we don't put things on the list and have hearings, people don't fix them. So until somebody like you is forced to come here, that's what happens. So what are you willing to do? And how long is it gonna take you to do it? And then Jimmy, what is the process for that? Like a permit or something? How do we know whether or not this is moving forward?
So I have to get a permit for it, whatever he's gonna do, but that's the thing. What are y'all wanting to do to get it off the list?
Well, I think to get it off the list, it needs to be safe. I mean, I don't, you know, we don't need it to be remodeled, we need it to be not a public hazard. And what are the things that would need to be done to make this safe? Okay, what about structurally?
I haven't been inside. I look from the outside, but I...
There's not a lot of inside.
If he fixes the outside and y'all want to take it off the list, I'm good with it. House burnt in 2016. And the letter came back on trial.
Well, yeah.
I'm just giving you what I have. Now, doors, windows, inside, out of metal. And board the windows so they don't break them.
Okay.
Board perfectly good windows?
Yep, because if you don't, they're gonna throw rocks and bricks and...
I own the house on the side, and them windows ain't boarded up and they don't touch it. I mean, it's not a bad neighborhood.
That's up to you.
Board it without windows?
No.
Huh?
Can you board it up without windows, putting new windows in?
Depends what kind of, you gotta almost put the windows...
At the cost of plywood, he just assumed put the windows.
Correct. Yeah.
I have all the windows in the house now.
So, if I can keep talking, this is usually the time when the landowner says, "This is what I'm willing to do and this is how long I need to do it."
But I, and...
The council talks about whether or not that's enough and soon enough.
So, and I agree, I will remove all the siding. All my plans was to remove the siding, put new siding, and also the roof with the windows and doors. And at that point, I was gonna really push to do that as soon as I can, as soon as I'm able to, right? And at that point, the inside, you know, at that point, I feel like I gotta get an electrician or plumber. Them are things I can't do by myself, right? I'm not licensed for it.
Okay. So, how much time are you looking for to get this thing?
Again, I'll be honest, right now, and I don't want to blow smoke for nobody, I'm about to leave for a very long time. I was even looking into getting somebody. I contacted somebody about getting out there, taking it off, and just getting that part done. Windows, doors, and I want to change the roof. I was never told I had to or nothing. I mean, I'm going there for...
You got your siding and your windows and doors done.
I don't have siding.
And you...
Oh, okay.
Want you to put siding. But if you did your siding and your windows and doors, then I'm safe again, and it's not an eyesore to the neighbors, and you can do your roof after. Because you, it wouldn't mad, I'm just trying to cut your time down, so if you, you know, if you could hire somebody to do the siding, windows and doors, we would at least have a shell that's safe and that looks presentable, and then you come back and do, I've been a contractor for 38 years, I'm sorry, then you come back and do your roof, then you go inside. You know, now you've got a full envelope. But, so I guess the question is, you know, we, you're gonna have to go back and visit us again, and you're gonna be offshore from what it sounds like. So, you know, some kind of way, we need to come up with a timeline, because you in our system, you are on a timeline. I want to work with you, as does, you know, it's obvious, you heading in the right direction, but, you know, probably your safest bet, if you can do that, would be to hire somebody to come and get a permit and to do at least the siding, windows and doors while you're offshore.
Right.
Then at least you're making every effort, you know?
Yeah. I'm willing to, I'll be honest, right now, it ain't easy to get contractors that want to work, I'll be honest.
I know that.
I've called quite a few and there was no answer, so that's why I was gonna go out there and, you know, tackle it as I can.
Dustin?
So if he were to not actually put new windows and doors, but actually board them up and make the house secure with siding, that still encounters a safe? That's my question. I don't know what we consider as a secure and safe.
Good question. Can do before he goes offshore?
Yeah, hang on, Dustin has the floor.
That's my question, like, so if you're putting new windows and doors and you board it up, is it almost the same? Because I see some properties around, out there in the city that have, they board it up, they say they're secure, they board it up. Now, do we know they have windows behind those boards? I don't know, because I haven't never really went and looked. But is that an option for him? Being that he is right here in front of us and he's willing to do what he has to do? That's just a question I have.
That's gonna be a, we haven't done that before. We've tried to get people, we even had a boarding policy and we decided that didn't work.
Right.
People in two months, three months, in some neighborhoods, people unboarded them, and then we had owners saying, "Well, I boarded up once, I'm not gonna do it again." We found that that was, we even thought about Public Works going to do that and kind of nix that idea that, that's not the answer, because then every time the board came off, they're gonna call Public Works to go put it back on. So that's something we investigated and then decided, "We don't want to do that." So it's, I'm up with, you know, we open, all of this is a group discussion and a group decision, but, you know, that's one that, it's on the table, I don't mind discussing it, but it's not a permanent fix, because he's offshore for 100 days and somebody prys his boards off, and we don't, now we back to having neighbors complaining, that kind of thing. So, anyway, but...
So, Delcum, you don't have any timeline at all, like, not even?
Again, if I tell you, I'm literally leaving for a 10-world campaign, and this year I just did one that went over 100-something days.
Yeah.
You know? And the thing about it is, I don't want to make everybody mad, and I'll tell you, hey, in 40, 50, 60 days, I'm gonna get it done, and I just know right now, but if I hire somebody and I'm able to get somebody out there that won't pull my eyes off, you know? And they, I've had, come across people that will do it for, you know, a decent price, just, a lot of them, I'll be honest, is chasing the storms and they doing work over there for a lot more money than anybody over here is willing to pay him, you know? So, but I can't continue to look, and I also, you know, as I come in and I'm able to do it, I'm willing to take care of it and do it, you know? To a point of a safe matter that y'all, you know?
Yeah. We had some other hands up. I think that Brooke was next, and then I'll go back around.
I was just gonna say, I thought that we were letting people board up their doors and windows. I didn't realize we did away with that. And just him being here, showing initiative, you know, I feel like we should give him some sort of grace, you know? Like you said, he's not running from the city or anything. He's here, he plans on working on it, he's been keeping up the yard. If he can keep it secure by boarding up the windows and doors, that's a start at least, until he can find someone to do the work. That's just my opinion. Of course, I'll go with whatever Mr. Marlowe wants to do, but I think just to board it up, I thought that we were still doing that. I didn't realize we found it wasn't working.
I think you had Janice next.
I think, I mean, obviously, you just walked in. So, I got a concern. I think Mr. Delcum has a valid concern, but I think you guys need to look at the big picture. We setting precedence here. What we do with this one, the next one, the following, you're gonna have the same thing? Same thing, and then we're gonna get away from our resolution. I think, you know, we need to look at this as he wants to do the work, but at the least, he needs to go get a permit and have a plan of action. If y'all want to shift the date a little bit, a few more days, that's fine, but 100 days is beyond the scope, I think, of what we really looking to do in this city.
Right, I think 90 days is the most we've given it by.
Yeah, so, and I really, you know, I think he has a good idea and I'm excited he wants to do it, but if we tell him, "No permit, go board it up," then the next man's coming up here, wants the same thing, and you gotta tell him no. So, I think you guys need to be consistent, think about consistency and what we want, and what we want this program to do. And the least, though, the least minimum, he needs to get a permit, with a plan of action, in my opinion.
DeeDee, how'd you have next?
So I was just gonna say, I think Mr. Delcum is actually showing that he has some interest. Mr. Delcum, can you tell us what your plan is long-term for this house? I mean, is this something you plan on renovating and renting out? I mean, is there a long-term plan here?
It's a rent house, this is all it ever be for me. Again, I own the one on the side of it, and nobody, since I've bought it, has lived in it. I've done work in it since I bought it five months ago or something like that. And same thing with this one, it's completed, it'll be just a rent house.
Okay. All right. I mean, I guess we just... Yeah, we, I agree with you, Ricky, we have to, we're setting precedent every time we do this, but I do think there are also sometimes when you have to have an exception to the rule. This is an issue because of employment. It's not because he's just sitting around at home, not doing anything. His employment is gonna require him to be away for 100 days. I mean, that's, to me, that's an exception that I can live with. That's just my thoughts.
Deidre, I think you were next.
Yeah. Like you heard some of the council members say, the longest we actually give somebody normally is 90 days to have something done. What you think you could have done within those 90 days if we decide to give you those?
Again, with me leaving, I'll try my hardest. The only shot within 90 days, I'll be honest, is right now, this point would be only if I can get somebody out there to remove the siding, re-siding with the windows and the doors. And again, I'll tell you, if anybody went in, all the windows for the house is in the back of the house. I actually tore down the house and put them in there to do it, and the project got prolonged by the way I work. So, that'd be my only shot within 90 days of doing it, unless, you know, tonight or somebody would say, "Go get a permit, board them up." To the time being, you can get there, and I can definitely, you know, again, do that before I leave.
Yes, sir, Jeff?
Okay, so what can you do before you leave? You could board it up?
I know a couple of them mentioned about, you know, just boarding it up to be safe, you know, for the time being. I'm more than willing to, you know, go get the permit and do that until I arrive back or have a chance.
So when are you scheduled to go off?
Right now, I'm scheduled for the 15th.
Okay. You think you could get it secure? Jimmy, you think it'd be safe if he boarded it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then that is an option. So... It's an option. If the council agrees.
So you could get a permit right away to board it, right?
Yes, sir.
And you could get it boarded so that at least people wouldn't be going in and out and it would be secure?
Yeah.
And then, long-term, that's not gonna be a permanent solution?
No, sir.
And it's not gonna work for you either, because that's not gonna make you any money.
No, it's costing me.
So, you know, long-term, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be repaired, but I don't think, I don't think the council wants to let this stay the way it is while you're offshore and nothing get done, because it's dangerous. I mean, that's the whole reason we have this thing here, so... If you could board it, get a permit, board it immediately, and then we could revisit this, in how much time? It's up to y'all.
Well, I like, I want to hear everybody else talk, you know, but I mean, I got a lot of things raised. First of all, I feel like you up here too long, because he gave us a solution and we got, we worked it out and talked it out, but my thing is, I want to talk about the boarding of houses. Man, there's a lot of houses in New Iberia that's boarded up that aren't on the demolition list. So, you know, we would almost have to go back and get all of those people and put them on, I mean, these houses been, me and DeeDee rode the district...
We're picking the most dangerous first.
Right, so that's where I'm going, Freddie.
And we probably have a little while of picking the most dangerous first. Do I think that if we are successful spending the 100 grand we're spending this year, putting money in every year, at some point, we are gonna be backing up and addressing the boarding at some point, we are going to be backing up and addressing the boarded ones? But right now, our main responsibility is, is public safety.
Right, and again, where I was going with this, burn houses are the worst.
They are. No offense, they are.
Mr. Delcum, burn houses are the worst. We not trying to get you to total, do a total remodel, but we don't want to get you to board it up and then it stays boarded. That's our dilemma.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's our dilemma, so. That's the dilemma.
It is, it is.
That's the dilemma. That, you know, I'm all right with you boarding it up, but do we say here, he's boarded it up, come back to the council in such, such time and have it fixed?
I, I think that if we're gonna stay on the aggressive track we're on, that's what we should do. We should not just say, board it up, see you later. It should be boarded up and I, I do, DeeDee made a very good point that it's some extenuating circumstances, that it's not that he's goofing, it's his job and he gets shipped out. Not right here in town that he could be doing something. Right here in town that he's just saying, huh, well, give me all the time I can have. He's got a, a real reason, legitimate reason. So, you know, we're deciding this together as we always do, but if you do decide to let him board it up, I think it needs to have a timeline. It can be reasonable, you know, he should be back in ninety days, but it should be reasonable that we say, okay, we're gonna let it stay boarded up for ninety days and then we're gonna address it again. Because if we don't do that, then we just start losing track and losing ground. We have hundreds of houses to get to. So I think that if I had my way, and I mean, I'm only one voice on here, uh, nobody gets off the hook. If they've made it to this point, it's because it's an issue for the neighbors. It's an issue that was strong enough and affected enough people that it got on the radar for us to, to have it on the list. So it's either fix it or you don't get off the list.
Correct.
But I understand that when it's some extenuating circumstances, you know, we gotta be government, we gotta follow the rules. I'm not saying we don't have to have a heart and I'm not saying that what we want is people living in these houses. Who wants to represent an empty lot? On the flip side, after we give you chance after chance and you don't fix it, then we have to take the drastic action. We'll just tear it down. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I think it's a temporary solution and as long as we all know it's a temporary solution. Why not? Now, do I think one day we'll be checking on all those boarded ones? Yeah, what a success that we'll go through the dangerous houses, we'll go through the ones that are open and empty and burned and causing trouble or very dilapidated, that one day we'll be able to actually go get to the boarded ones? That, that's gonna be a good day. But that's a while.
I'm gonna say the quick version.
Yep.
You're either on the list or you're not.
Yep.
You're either on the list or you're not. And he's on the list and several other people on the list.
That's right.
How we deal with them on the list is up to us.
That's right.
If you're not on the list, then you're not on the list.
That's right.
So I'm not trying to go back to the boarded house, I'm just saying.
I know you're not.
It, we can get to those weeds.
I'm just saying, what a success when we, when we can talk about it.
We getting to those weeds, but I don't want to go there. I, I'm trying to help. Trying to resolve this and you say at a point when you said, we have a lot of other houses, so.
We do.
I mean, I'm, I'm forgiving him, have, he said something about the fifteen. You saying, when, how soon can you have it boarded up?
I, I would have to have it before the fifteen. I'll leave on the fifteen.
Okay, all right, which is, which is what, thirty days?
Fifteen to the fifteenth.
No, fifteen to December.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about eight days.
He's leaving in eight days, so he's got to board it up.
So, I mean, if you can get it boarded up, then, I mean, board it up.
Okay.
But, you know, in my mind, if he boarded up and it's like, it's like he's never been here before because he gonna have to come back and.
Well, we have to give him, we have to give him the time, right, but we need to stay the time. In other words, he should board it up and I think we should stay the time of when we're gonna revisit.
So the urgency is boarded up because it's unsafe right now?
That's exactly right. But he still didn't fix the problem.
Right.
We, he, he, he came, he showed heart, he, he wants to do something, he's cutting the grass. So I think now we give him a time limit of when we want to see him again. It's not just go away, there's no go away. Once you make the list, I, I mean, I respect you, but once you're on the list, you, you don't go away.
Yeah, now, let's talk about the business. How would you word that motion?
That he has a week to board up the building to make it safe and that we revisit and we want to say ninety days, we can say ninety days.
Okay, so wait a minute, um.
But he has to board it to, you know, uh.
But if he's gone for a hundred days, he's not gonna make that ninety-day deadline. So.
Right.
We do, we give him a hundred and twenty days just to make sure he's back in town.
Yeah.
He said he's over a hundred days.
He's never gone over ninety days.
I feel like, I feel like if we give him, I feel like if we give him the time, if he, he's still, we really not giving him time to board it up. He's saying, look, I'll board it up because I know that's the biggest problem.
Yeah, he's got to.
That's what he's saying.
No offense.
Yeah.
And we're saying, you promising us you're gonna do that? Because we gonna see you in a hundred days.
Yeah. You could also put, no offense, if he didn't board it up, we'll tear it down.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be ugly, but I mean, you, you can have parameters.
Yeah.
Yes, Jeff, I know, wait, before I go in the weeds too much.
Well, no, I, I just think you need to revisit in thirty just to make sure it's secure.
Correct.
Yeah, that it was boarded up, right, right.
That's where I was going.
He won't be here, but we can revisit.
And we have a lot of people.
From the third, that's right.
Who for various reasons can't physically do the jobs themselves.
Right.
Some aren't here, some are el- older.
Yeah.
You know, some will live out of town, you know, whatever. I mean, I think if, if, if it needs to be done and the person is not able to do it, the public's not protected.
That's right.
You know, so I think if somebody has to be hired, somebody has to be hired. But I would say, at a minimum, we need to get a permit, get it boarded, get it secured, check it in thirty days.
That's it.
And then we can maybe revisit, if you want to give him ninety, I hate to go a hundred and twenty.
Well, the thirty gonna give him a.
Yeah, the ninety from thirty.
Ninety from the thirty.
No, I don't think it's ninety from the, well, that's up to y'all, but you know.
Ninety added on to the thirty is what I'm saying. When he comes back, if he comes back, but again.
Well, if he comes back?
Yeah, be- because of his job.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm just talking about communication with him because what I'll do, I'll call him within, between nine and fifteen and see if he got any progress done and report it to Jimmy. That's what I'll do as a council person. And we'll know as a council, well, I guess I'll call you because we can.
Yeah.
And I'll let you know.
That's fine.
The guy boarded his house and then we'll all know.
Yeah, so our motion is he has, he has.
We don't want to break the open meeting law, right? Having a meeting away from the meeting.
Right.
Let me take him to business. So I make a motion that we, uh, revisit in thirty days with the intent of having it boarded up within those thirty days.
All right.
And a permit?
And he has to get a permit before he burns it.
And, and a permit for the remodel.
I second the motion.
That's, that's good.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilwoman, uh, Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we just make sure he understands what he needs to do? Because it was a lot of talking, but I don't think.
I think he's got it, but.
Boarded it up, go revisit it in thirty.
Yeah.
Which is on January eighteenth and then, uh, we'll revisit it.
I would not be here for that.
I understand, you'll be offshore.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Delcum, I'll call you on the thirteenth or the fourteenth.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, sir. Whew.
Thank y'all, this was good. Government at work, like you say, Freddie.
Government at work, that's it.
I just want it safe.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay, Madam Clark, uh, four B.
Revisit the state of buildings located at one oh three Doris Street in action, resolution twenty-one, one fifty.
All right. There it is. Jimmy? Okay, good.
He can tell y'all what he plans. He came, he came into the office since the last meeting one time and he wanted a five thousand dollar permit, but I didn't have a scope of work.
Okay.
So I refused to give him the permit.
Till he had a scope of work?
Till he had a scope of work.
Dr. Del, is he here tonight?
Can you repeat what you just said?
We told you we needed a scope of work. What you gonna be doing to the house?
That's on Monday.
That was when you came into the office with a five thousand dollar permit?
In my pocket, because that's the lawyer told me to go ahead and leave that check there. I got the check here. You told me to go to the scope, what's the scope of that thing? The window needs glass. And this piece here needs to be put back in and that house need be painted. It's not, this here, I don't know, it's one of your agents came in here with that sledgehammer and did this. This is here, all you have to do, just put, put the siding on it and that house is, is beautiful. What I really admire about this man here, he can make Jesus look that, like the devil. This house doesn't look that bad the way he is. You see? Look how make, he makes it look so bad from there. I don't see this here on, in there. He knows how photography is so good. Go look, I need each one of you to go and look at that house before you vote to demolish my house. I need you to go and look at it. The mayor gave her three options, demolish, board it, or fix it. She said, no, demolish it. Demolish my investment. And then send me a bill for the, for the property that is worth more than what the property is. Y'all need to wake up. This is America. I am a minority in front of King David. King David wants my houses to be demolished because one day I confronted him when that black woman came in to me crying. She said, King David demolished my house. And I told him, shame on you, King David. Y'all need to wake up. What is the urgency? Sunday morning, the San Martinville Police Department, the Sheriff Department, goes and surround my daughter's house in San Martinville. And they deterred her until the Sheriff Department from San Martinville come, I mean, from Habeer Parish. Then they said, wait until the police come in. What is that urgency? The city police go there and give her a ticket. They said Jimmy Landry ordered us. I go on Bank Street, they tell me Jimmy Landry asked us to give a, to give you a ticket. I go, I tell them that there's some homeless going into my property. Officer Leje said Jimmy Landry given, one thing, Mayor, you did good by getting a good police chief. He kept that department clean. He kept that department beautiful. But when you have him on top of that, the police department giving tickets all over the place, that is wrong, that is wrong. I know he wouldn't do nothing without you blessing him. He, he goes by my, the mother of my kids six, seven times, called the police on her inside of her. Y'all need to quit. Y'all need to quit doing this kind of stuff. This house is a beautiful house. Hurricanes after hurricanes didn't bring that thing. First of all, before you ask me to do anything, Mr. David, you need to protect it from busting glass and all that. What's the use for me to go put the glass back on and you, he's gonna send some of his agents to, to bust the glass? I got a letter from somebody who was by the house and I know you helping that, just like you helped that man on my family's own. You know, I would like to fix my house, but I go there, I get all kind of problems I have to come up with. I go there asking him to please allow me to fix my house. My houses are being attacked all over the place. My son got killed and y'all ruled it to be a suicide. My son got killed because of all this bullshit. Now, you want to demolish that house in my bill? Go ahead. Yeah. And I promise you, we shall overcome. This is a phrase that I heard from President Johnson and I will, we will overcome. My house, it would not be demolished without y'all paying for it. I promise you, that house I visited every day, it's just like my children. I go there and I'm not gonna say farewell to that house that you would like to have it demolished. And I promise you, it will be paid by the city of New Habeer. You know, enough is enough. We are good people. I'm the most educated person in this town. I'm an engineer, don't laugh, sir, don't laugh. Go and check and see how many degrees I have. I'm a good man, I help a lot of people. I'm an engineer three times. I'm a doctor. I am a pilot, I'm everything. I was gonna donate a helicopter to the police department. And I met with the chief and I congratulate him because he's a good man and the police, uh, the department is my favorite department. They're good people. They're doing a beautiful job. Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you for allowing me to say that.
I'll let you in.
Yeah.
All right. Jimmy? David, you in history?
We can still see through and through and through that house for the last six months, through and through. We've asked.
It's your people that heated up.
Come on, Dr. Del, I gave you your time, I gave you your time. Now my council has their time.
I called the city up.
Sir.
I asked them to get somebody to board the house up when we could board it. Nothing was ever, not one nail, to board the house up to protect your own investment. Mr. Adel, you, the other house we had too, not one nail, no, I'm talking the other house.
You called me Doctor Adel, I'm not a Mister Adel.
I'll let you speak, I'll let you say your piece. Now it's our turn. Sir.
But in a large way. I got veterans that live on that street, two houses from that house are embarrassed. They're the ones that calling me up to do this to this house. The neighbors, not me, I represent neighbors. I represent people, Mr. Adel, not just you. So my point is that if you didn't fix it up yet, no matter if two years has been down, I knew the people that lived in that house before you bought it. And since you bought it, it has been going downhill every day. I knew the people personally, a tax-collecting people. So in a big way, Mr. Adel, we ask you politely to board the house. To board the house, you didn't put one nail to do anything. You can see through and through that house and every house you have, we can see through and through. So we getting tired of it. Our neighbors are getting tired of it. I represent the neighborhood. So that's my point. You can't fix it up enough to live with the neighbors. We gotta do something with it.
Dr. Adel, you had your time, sir.
Yeah, I need to, I answer.
It's not a debate, no, sir.
You cut me down, I'm cutting you down.
Hang on.
I need to answer to his allegation.
No, you had your time to speak.
Okay.
And I let you go on and on, sir. Bruce R., do you have anything else? You still on the floor?
Tear it down. We had three meetings on this house. Three meetings on this house. Haven't seen one nail you put in that house, one board or anything to help you, Mr. Adel. The neighbors are getting tired. Dr. Adel, the neighbors are getting tired looking at this thing.
Which neighbors?
All of them. Go walk the street, you hear them, like I do.
All right. You done, sir?
Done, sir.
All right. Do I have any other comment from, I have, my city attorney with his hands up. Jeff, I'll call on you.
Well, what needs to be done to make the building safe, that's the first question that I have. And the second question is, is Dr. Adel willing to do that? And the third question I have is, how long is it gonna take? So, and it's not a question for Dr., the first question I guess is for Jimmy. So what needs to be done to make the building safe? Because I know we're not here for appearance, we're not here for, you know, aesthetics, we're here for safety. So what needs to be done to make the building safe?
Look at the pictures. Those broken windows need to be repaired. All right, yeah. All right, all the windows that are broken need to be repaired or covered. Go ahead. That needs to be repaired. Any rotten wood needs to be repaired. Next picture. All of that termite damage needs to be repaired. There's from the street. You can see where it's siding is missing, needs to be repaired. Go ahead. Siding on the back. There's a little addition on the back. All that needs to be redone. I don't know what part of the house that is. That needs to be repaired. That, that part that's added on on the back, go one more picture. That part looks like it's separating from the house, so there's some structural things that need to be repaired. I didn't do a full examination of it, but it needs to be looked at to be repaired. Because it's coming apart from the house, it looks like. Foundation failure or whatever. And the roof needs to be looked at. With all the tree, uh, leaves and everything that's on that valley, I don't know if it's leaking inside or not.
So those things we think would secure the house?
Yeah. That would be securing.
I know there's a lot of other work that ought to be done.
There's a lot of work on the inside.
But to secure the house, that's what would.
That's all on the exterior.
Okay.
Now, under the carport, that, that storage room on the back of the carport. That, that room probably needs to be rebuilt. That wall underneath where it's termite ate up, all the termite damage, all that wood needs to come out. Or whatever's happened to it, I don't know. Looks like somebody might have ran into it.
Is that a close-up of, of that?
Yes, yes.
Jeff still has the floor. Dustin, will I finish?
Well, the first question would be, what needs to be done to make it safe? Not pretty, but safe. And then, what is Dr. Adel willing to do to take care of those items and how long does he need to do it? What I'd like to do is give us an alternative to demolishing.
Sir, allow me just to do the work. I have the checks with me. I went to talk to him. Here's the check. And I told him, I want to fix my house. Allow me to fix it. Here is the check with me. My lawyer said, throw it on the, on the thing and leave it there.
It's not just a check, we have rules.
Well, I, I want to fix whatever it takes. I want to fix it. You see what I'm saying? He comes up with different rules for us, for me and my family. And that house doesn't look that bad like this here. He knows how to make it look bad.
Yeah, I mean, this is the part of the meeting where somebody makes a promise that we grab onto it, right? And we give them a chance to do what they ought to do. And, Dr. Adel, this is the opportunity for you to tell us that you're gonna do what you need to do. So we don't have to demolish it to, to protect the public. So.
I promise y'all, last time I said, I would love to make my house look nice, but I also ask you to protect it. You got a little police department overworked and the people, you need to have a better police, more police, you know? I would like to fix it. I know I can fix it.
Okay, well.
Dustin, you patiently had your hand up.
Thank you. Uh, my question for, so Jimmy, he came to get a.
Uh, my question for, so Jimmy, he came to get a $5,000 permit, right?
With no scope of work.
With no scope of work?
Yeah.
Now, I'm gonna, I would say this.
If I don't have a written scope of work of what he's doing, 'cause I want in writing what he's doing.
Correct.
Because if I gotta come back up to this council in 30 days, I can check off of that scope of work, what he's done and what he hasn't done. I have not gotten anything.
Okay, so reason why I ask you that. So he's basically stating that it would take $5,000?
In my opinion, that's not enough.
Okay, so that's why, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not any of those things, but I know I have some common sense and it takes more than $5,000 to fix that home. Correct?
That's what I'm.
All right. How long will be dealing with this property for?
Three months.
Three months.
Three months, I need you.
Okay, so.
Not a nail has been done to.
So Mr. Bruce R., it's your district, it's your decision. I'll support you, whatever you wanna do. So, that's it.
So, Dr. Dell, the last time you were here, we asked you to get the necessary paperwork to Jimmy. And basically, he wanted, you know, you to get a contractor to go in and kind of look at what needs to be done and bring that paperwork in so he could issue you a permit. Have you had a contractor look at the house?
Ma'am, what paperwork do you need? Whatever he shows here, I'm gonna fix.
Okay, can you just tell me, did you, have you had anyone come out and give you an estimate on how much it's gonna take to fix the house? At least to make it safe.
I'm gonna fix it myself. I'm a civil engineer.
Okay, but have you written down, within, okay, that's fine. Have you written down what you're gonna do and brought that paperwork to Jimmy? 'Cause basically, what I'm hearing him say is that he needs you to write down what you're gonna do and give him an estimate of how much that's gonna cost so that he can issue you a permit to do that work. So have you done that?
I'm telling him now, I'm gonna fix whatever he has there on, on the board.
Well, do you remember the last time you were here? We did ask that question. We asked you to provide that information to Jimmy so that you get your permit, so that you can start working on the house.
Ma'am, Jimmy is not interested in giving us any permit. She's going through the same thing.
Okay, but I'm just asking, have you brought that paperwork in?
What kind of paperwork I need to tell him? I'm gonna fix this, I'm gonna fix that.
He said, he just said he needs it in writing. You can't just say it. You have to have it in writing.
I'll have it in his office no more.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify, since that was what we asked for last time.
I have been a contractor for 38 years. That man bust my butt every time I come to get a con, a, a permit myself. How many times do I come in and get a permit? You know what I have to do? I have to be an engineer, Dr. Dell. Do the right thing. Come up with a scope of work. I have to give him a set of plans. I have to give him a list of what I'm gonna do. I have prices. I have it all laid out. And I'll buy a permit for a specific task that I'm gonna do. You can understand that, 'cause you got five degrees, okay? You're a smart man. I'm talking. What you need to do is put a scope of work together that comes up to a dollar value so that we know what you're buying and we know what you're gonna do. Then you turn around and you write your check and you pay for it. And then, sir, he can go check your scope of work to make sure that you did it. It's not very complicated. If you have that many degrees, you should be able to do it. 'Cause I've been doing it for 38 years. Do I think it's a pain in the butt sometimes? I really do. And I've given Jimmy an earful long before he worked for me, okay? Because sometimes I don't like government and I don't like the rules either. But that's the rules. We need to know what you're buying. You need to quantify what you're doing. It's like writing a spec book. It's like putting a set of plans together. You can do that. You try not to do that. You're trying to come in and be vague. You're coming in to be vague and give an excuse why you're not being treated fairly. Every one of us who goes to that permit office is treated the same way. His bedside man is not always great. Sorry, Jimmy. He's tough on everybody, but I'm telling you, we have rules and we're gonna follow those rules. So you come in with a scope of work, if that's what this council decides. But quit beating around the bush that I'm trying to drop a check off. My lawyer said to drop, I'm tired of that. What you need to do is follow the rules like every other contractor does in this town and in every other town. I work all over Kadena. Guess what? It's the same all over. So if you can follow, yes. Yeah, if you don't have a scope of work, then what you buying? We don't know why you buying a permit. We don't know what you're doing. So, nobody's picking on you, sir. Follow the rules. If you can't follow the rules, you will end up in here quite often 'cause you have quite a few houses that need attention. Nobody's picking on you, but in every neighborhood, you have houses that people are complaining. You just said how good my police department was, but then when you can twist it around for yourself, you do. You don't get it both ways, sir. I'm done. Yes, sir.
And you said everything, to be honest with you. But I'm, I'm like.
Well, I got tired of beating around the bush.
Scope of work, that's simple, Doc. I had to do it when I reminded my barber shop. Everybody I know, listen, I'm a black man that own a black barber shop that cut black people hair, right, our contractors. All of them gotta go through it, Doc. On that scope of work thing, I'm gonna just say, that's, that's, that's not right. He's been fair. All of my friends who do contracting work gotta go through that scope of work thing, Doc. This ain't no discrimination thing, far as I know. 'Cause all of my friends gotta go through it.
Since you said it, I'm gonna have it in his.
Bring the scope of work, Doc. Listen, Doc, I don't wanna see no houses tear down for nobody. I wish it. Li, 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 listen, listen, Doc, let me tell you what I wish. 'Cause you say we friends. I wish you sell them and let somebody who ready to work on them, work on them.
Who said you were my friend?
That's just, you said I was your friend. You said I was your friend. I don't take that word loosely, but you said I was your friend. I don't take it loosely either. You know? But, uh, that's what it, that's what it is, Doc. Get your scope of work, man. I thought I was your friend and your brother, but it's okay.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis.
Mr. B.
Mr. Bruce R.? Your hand up. Why you rubbing your head?
Last time, we went in circles again. Last time, we went in circles. We coming up with the same. I'm gonna give you a stage, Mr. Dell. Doctor, Doctor Dell, I'm not gonna look at you.
I'm gonna look at the picture.
Doctor Dell, get the scope of work you have to get done and get it done right. Within 30 days, within 30 days, we coming back. You better have that scope of work and how you gonna do it to save this house?
No, he better have a permit and be working on it.
Yeah. Within 30 days, we better see everything we need to see in action. And you won't be, we won't tear it down. We won't tear it down. You were talking to me worse than that. You were talking to me worse than that. So, no, I'm giving you a chance right now. And I'm not, we not gonna tear it down. We will give it to you again. So get the paperwork we need. In 30 days or so, whatever it is, then we gonna look at it again.
30 days is January the 18th.
I second your motion.
You know, you have 30 days to come back.
Let me just clarify. So wait.
In 30 days.
The motion in 30 days, he has to get a permit?
Permit and all the stuff that Mr. Jimmy needs to get it going in paper.
You need to have it safe.
We're asking for it from the beginning. We don't wanna tear our house down.
Mr. Bruce R., can you make sure it's safe as well? Until he starts working on it, can he get it safe?
Yep. We've been trying to ask him for that.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be secured.
So, you've got, you've got 30 days to board it up, to secure it so that it's safe and to pull a permit to make the repairs. Is that?
Okay.
We talk pull the permit, can I have the floor?
Yeah, sure.
Pull, pull, pull the permit to repair just outside or the house is inside out?
If he does all the outside, then the house is safe.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure it's clear what we talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you in 30 days with your company.
So your motion is 30 days, pull a permit, have the house boarded up and be working on the repairs.
I wanna clarify something.
Sure.
For myself.
Y'all go ahead and vote on the motion. And then I, I wanna clarify something.
So you wanna do it before we vote?
Well, his daughter was served a summons for her house at 295 Camellia. That's why Iberia Parish was in St. Martin Parish, 'cause that's where she lives. So, before I get accused of something, sending somebody out there, that was through the court.
Okay, that's fine.
He just told you something wrong.
Hang on, hang on. We're not going there. We're not going there. We're not going there.
Okay. He just told you a lie.
We, we're not going there.
Can I second that motion?
Yes, that, your motion's on the floor. We have a motion on the floor. Councilman Bruce R. and a second by Councilman Lewis. Is there any other? Yes, sir.
I want a clarification before, before we vote on it.
All right.
What are exactly, what do you understand we requesting, Jimmy? From this motion?
A permit and then the start to work to secure the house and repair the carport, the windows, the doors, anything on the exterior, the side.
And that permit is to go along with the city in our various code ordinance?
Right. The building codes.
But, so I make sure.
But in 30 days, it needs to be secured.
Yes, yes.
That's what I wanna put in the motion.
Yeah, 'cause we're here for safety.
Yeah, we, we don't want it to start to be secured. We want it secured in 30 days. 'Cause if it's not safe, then it's gotta come down.
Yep. Any other discussion on this? I'm. Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Yeah, me too. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're, uh, for C. For C. Thank you.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 809 Edna Street in action. Resolution 21 dash 151.
Okay, so that's one in District 5?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not the one the people want.
Okay.
That's the one next door.
So is anyone here for 809 Edna? Then we demolish. My recommendation is demolish.
I'm gonna second.
It's my job and your job really quick.
Oh, sorry.
It's all good.
Jimmy's fault.
Good job, good job.
We all in shambles.
I kinda needed a break.
I second a motion.
It was Jimmy's fault. He's not talking to me.
So, we are, we have a motion on the floor by, by Councilwoman Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tim. Councilman, and I see, I see the attorney has his hand up. Yes, sir.
I, I just wanna remind you how we came back to this one. Uh, this was on the list earlier. It got left off the notice list when Mr. Burke sent the notices out. So we contacted him later and said, do this. I have, I tried to reach him today. I could not confirm that he'd sent the notices out. But assuming that he sent the notices out, that's fine. And I'll just confirm that before we take any action on it.
Okay. So, I have a motion on the floor and a second. And I'll ask, is there any other discussion?
We need to clip that part of the tape.
Yeah, it's okay. So we, I hear nothing, no other discussion? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, 4E.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 811 Edna Street in action. Resolution 21 dash 152.
All right, got the house up? It's your district again?
Yes, this is also District 5, it's next door.
Right. Jimmy?
This house has a permit.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Wu from, I think it's New York or wherever. She sent me a scope of work. She's gonna fix the outside. So we issued her a permit today and the contractor should be starting anytime.
Good.
Um, my motion's gonna be to revisit in 30 days.
Yes.
Sir.
And I know there's been a lot of back and forth between the owner of the property and Liz in your office, who has done some good work to try to get this thing moving forward. So, uh, you know, Liz, who usually just wants to throw the book at everybody, I think has been, well, she's been very helpful trying to get this thing moving.
Yeah, and has got it moving.
Yeah.
So nice to see something with a scope that we can save. The scope of work you need.
And who are you referring to?
Okay.
So nice to see that.
So, I make a motion that we revisit this one in 30 days?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Deed Reed and a second by Councilwoman Morkat to revisit in 30 days. And it's moving in a positive direction. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. All right, Madam Clerk, 4E.
Revisit the state of buildings at 318 Week Street in action. Resolution 21 dash 153.
All right, Jimmy? I think we have somebody here for the house?
Is that District 3, Jimmy, or that?
No, that's District 5 again.
It's 5.
We need to put the districts.
And we just forgot this week. We haven't put them.
Yeah.
All right. Jim? We have somebody here for the house, which is good.
At the last meeting, we told them we needed a scope of work. I haven't got a scope of work. This house needs a lot of work. A lot of work. The windows, the siding, the structure. I don't know if it's falling off the pillars or whatnot. It looks like it's sitting on the ground. You got a lot of termite damage. As you can see in this picture right here, all that termite damage has to be torn out.
This one, we're gonna take it off completely. We don't need it.
They got a second roof over that part. So, I don't know how they gonna tear part down with all that termite damage on those rafters. That's gonna be an interesting case. That's the back of it. Yes, that's the house. That's at 318, that's in the back.
That's not termite. That's actually not, that's not termite damage. That's damage, that's damage that came from a fire, sir. And if you go, if you go around in the inside of the house.
Sir, you should probably get up and come to the mic so we can hear and address the council.
That actually, Mr. Jimmy, that's actually not termite damage. You can see that it's been, it's been burnt. It been burnt, but all of the, all of the pieces right there alone, just that back part alone, I could fix it myself, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's no problem because she have all the material for it. But the thing is, you wanna allow her to go on the property to start fixing it. I mean, she tried to get a permit. I mean, I'm not against it, Mr. Jimmy, I can understand what you're saying, how it look. It look like that. That's somebody that's trying to save their house too. So, if she gonna pay me to do the work, I will do the work. And she have all our material. I mean, it look like it's termite damage to me too, but it's burnt. If you actually walk up on it, it's actually been burnt like that. That's the wood that been damaged from being, um, people that's been coming from the outside and maybe set it a fire or whatever, 'cause I walked around it, I walked in it. And that's just one side of the back that looks like that. Everything else about it, and the way that it's sinking, it's not, uh, the falling off of the pillars is actually, um, the ground is not level, you know what I'm saying? It's sinking. But if it do come to it, to where she have to jack it up or put it on some more pillars, she's willing to do that as well. We talked about that. And the damage that, it's not, it's not that much of a damage if somebody that's trying to save their house. I know I wouldn't just let it go myself, you know what I'm saying? But I can't say that that's hers. But she's willing to do the work, and she still have to give you the scope of work that she promised you to get to you. So, therefore, we'll have that to you in the morning. And, um, everything else is just a go.
Okay, so, um, were you the gentleman that was with them last week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, when I left you guys, you told me that you were gonna go and get that scope of work. What happened?
We actually have the scope of work that she forgot, ma'am. It's not a problem. We have, we have it.
But I thought you guys were gonna take it back to the compliance office and get your permit.
Her daughter, her daughter came, her daughter came up here with it too late. It was too late. No excuse, you know what I'm saying? 'Cause you did tell us to come back up here with it. Her daughter came back up here with it too late or whatever the case may be. But I know that I did the scope of work myself personally, and we have it. She just didn't bring it right now with us. She's supposed to have it, but we have it printed out, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got what I need, like the tint, the windows, the glass, you know, I got the Mr. Ronald.
Okay.
He gave me that.
I mean.
And I have most of the material at the house, so I can receive for it.
All right.
Okay, so.
District.
Yes, um, and I know that you guys are interested in fixing the house. I'm gonna give you thirty more days. I'm gonna recommend, 'cause the council has to agree with me. I'm gonna recommend to give you thirty more days so you can get that permit and get started. But in the meantime, you have to secure the house, just like what everybody else that's come up here. The house has to be secured. You guys gotta get that permit, you gotta get started on this house.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor for thirty days. You board the house up immediately so that it's safe. And then you go to the permit office with a scope of work, like we've asked for all of these, so we know what you're purchasing, and you buy a permit based on that scope of work.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Reed, and who was the second? It's led by, okay, Councilwoman.
Oh, he has questions.
Okay.
Are you the contractor? You're the contractor on the job?
Yes, me and my brother.
Okay, you and your brother?
Yes, sir.
You licensed contractor?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry you had the floor.
That's what I wanna know if you was a licensed contractor.
So, you have your residential license?
Yes, sir.
'Cause I don't want you to go through all this trouble and you don't have your license.
I wouldn't even show my face in this courthouse if that was the case.
You couldn't get a permit, so that's good, that's good.
That's a question I have.
Yes, sir. No, you're supposed to.
Can you give that other guy a price? No, I'm picking.
I wanted to ask you, but now I can't do this.
So, I just wanna, is it okay, Mayor, if I make another comment? So, I just wanna make sure that you guys understand that you have to board it because we've had reports of people going in there to sleep and stuff. That cannot happen.
No, we've had some homeless people there.
So, you have to make sure it gets boarded.
When you start work, we are, you can't have people, people cannot be in that house, you know, while you're working on it.
Right, they can't live in there.
There's a problem with that, you call the police department and we will help you handle that. But you can't have people, 'cause I know we've been by there and people have been living in the house. You can't have that, you know, we need you to fix the house and those people need to be removed from the house.
The one who destroyed the whole porch, it was a homeless person was going there and I was calling the police, you can ask him so many times. And the neighbors called the police, but they said nothing they can do.
If somebody's standing in the house.
No, when you get a permit to work on that house and you give us permission, we will remove, they will get out of that house. And they have to.
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's one of the reasons why you gotta secure it.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to board it up from the beginning, or you're gonna fight that every day.
'Cause, you know, sooner or later, the winter comes, you know, people using buckets for plumbing and fires for heat, and that's not gonna be good for your house.
Yes, sir, I know.
No homeless people under there.
I know.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Sarah, see y'all. Happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, five A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-one and ordinance amending sections fifty-eight through sixty-six and fifty-eight dash sixty-nine of Division Two of Article Three of Chapter Fifty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia, relative to unnecessary noise and to set for public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Do have a motion on its side.
Motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Morcott and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. All right, now we need some discussion. Yes, ma'am.
This is long overdue.
Yes, ma'am, we know.
So, basically, this means we do not need a decibel meter to take it anywhere.
Correct. My problem is that the base is not picked up by the decibel meter. We have had problems with our officers going out and it is below, the noise volume is below the decibel meter, but as people spoke about, the windows are rattling.
Right.
Okay, it is obnoxious. So, we had to come up with another way, which was not easy. We spent many months on this with the ordinance committee. Jeff worked on it. Deidra, the whole ordinance committee has been working on this for months to try to have something that fits the bill. But this is, in addition, not having to have the decibel meter and giving the officer some discretion while they're out there.
Okay, I've actually had a constituent move out of her house in my district because of the noise that was down the street. And she called the police numerous times, but there was nothing they could do about it because of the way the ordinance was.
Just like, just like our people, that's one of the reasons we're doing this.
Right, so, thank you guys for rewriting that ordinance.
There's no more public, you had your public comment, but we don't go back and forth at this point in the meeting.
I'm done.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I'm assuming it also includes these guys with these big mufflers on their trucks and, you know, making all that noise?
Yeah, noise is noise.
Okay, all right.
Our biggest complaint has been, music has been, there's been some bars that have been problems, there've been some audio places that have been problems. There's been some muffler shops that have been problems. You know, we've had quite a few noise issues and this will apply to all of them.
For someone who lives on a corner of a very busy street, I do applaud this effort. However, when I read through this thing, there were a couple of things that kinda came to my attention that I'm not sure I'm on board with. One is, um, the timeframes. You guys have Monday through Saturday between ten PM and six AM. I mean, in my opinion, Friday and Saturday should be an exception for the bars to at least midnight. Ten PM is very early. If I'm running a business, I have a bar, and you're telling me I gotta turn the music down at ten o'clock at night on a Friday and Saturday. That's the first thing.
Go ahead.
Also, I think that Sunday shouldn't be totally excluded because sometimes they open up on Sunday, so why not till six o'clock on a Sunday? It seems very restrictive. And then the last thing was, um, when I looked at the penalties, I mean, I'm fine with the five hundred dollars, but to me, incarcerating somebody after six months, that seems excessive. Louisiana is the one state in the Union that puts more people in jail than anybody else. To me, that's not something that we would wanna put somebody in jail for. Give them a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollar fine, but I don't agree with incarceration for six months. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the first one, we have issues with bars where people are living. So, one of the reasons we looked at the timeline and went back and forth is, we probably have six families living downtown right now, and we have all those empty buildings on the second floor. Upper story development is our ticket for downtown. All those balconies become porches and people live there like they used to. So, one of the issues, we've had problems where buildings, businesses actually closed because of bars making so much noise. So, we were considering the bed and breakfasts, and like I said, the new trend, I'm actually looking at two buildings that I know of downtown that two families are thinking about moving. That would put us at ten families. So, we're kinda had that in our mind when we started talking about time limits, and it's not that you have to shut down, it's just that you lower the noise. The other one, it's an either/or. In other words, upon second or subsequent offenses. What that gave us was, if you have someone that just has total disregard, and the second time, the third time, you keep filing, filing them for five hundred dollars, there's become a point that you have to have a bigger hammer. So, that's where we looked at and saying, it was up to the amount of incidents, it was up to the officer, it was up to, you know, the court system, actually. But we tried to have something that was a real hammer at some point for people who just aren't gonna, aren't gonna, they're gonna try to just skirt this or not obey.
Well, my.
It is a major problem, I can tell you.
No, I agree.
You know.
But I would say on, on the last thing we just talked about, add a zero to the number every time. That's, to me, monetary, um, penalties would be better than incarceration. That's just me. Second, as far, and I'm gonna say this again, and I know that you guys probably don't agree with me, but if you move downtown in amidst the bars, you expect some noise. Otherwise, you go and live in a neighborhood.
Right.
So, I just feel like it's unfair to the business.
That's where we're gonna disagree. We have three bars downtown, basically.
Okay, but that, I mean, that's.
And you can't want more unless the neighboring buildings approve, so.
Okay, but still, do we, do we limit their ability to, to grow their business, make money? Because they can't have a, a somewhat loud party until ten o'clock?
Yeah, I'm not being ugly, I'm just.
Well, and I see, that's why I don't agree. I feel like, you know, we're affecting businesses and we shouldn't. And I think that if you're a resident and you wanna live downtown, you're supposed, you expect that there's gonna be noise 'cause you're living, it's, it's, what, what do they call that? Mixed-use living? So, you know what you're getting into. Just my thoughts.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, who have your hands next? Mr. Broussard, thank you, and next.
We've been around here quite a while, Mr. Mayor. Quite a while.
Yeah, we are.
Just tonight, you've been around here quite a while.
Yourself too, sir. This is the first time I've seen in my twelve to fifteen, we putting a bite into, into noise. We putting a bite into the ordinance, at least the curtail, noise. It's a bad problem to all of us.
It is.
A lot of older people live too that like to go to bed at a certain time, that they don't wanna hear noise from three, four blocks away. I can hear them from Bank Street, all the way to my house, four blocks away. Catholic has it quite often, but we putting up with it a little bit.
Okay.
Quite often, I'm just saying, Catholic has that boom-boom time and whatever, but this is the first time I see that we're talking about putting a bite into some noise makers.
Yes, sir.
To try to get their attention. We're on the right track. Keep it up. 'Cause some people like to go to bed at a certain good time.
Yes, sir.
There's way many more people, they're disturbing. Then they helping a few people listening to the music. They disturbing. And like Mr. Patonine said, it's not just noise. It's affecting the well-being of people when they doing it quite a long time and you're real close to it. So, there is a difference into your well-being that noise can hurt. So, I said my piece, and boy, Mr. Mayor, it's been a long time of coming. And finally, we putting a bite into some noise, and let's keep it going forward.
Yes, sir.
I just got a couple of comments. I'm not against the noise ordinance, uh, I don't like it no more either, I'm not lying. It's age thing too.
I think it is.
It's an age thing, so.
Except for DeeDee, she's not getting old.
Wait a minute, no, I don't like it either by my house.
It's an age thing, 'cause when they pull up to my place and I'm here, I go outside, I say, "Man, you gotta load it," and they'll sit in the car and just jam. And it scares me now, 'cause I'm getting old. I used to enjoy it, it scares me now. But my thing, I just got a couple of comments and a couple of questions. On the fine thing, eventually, no matter what fine you get for any violation, if you don't pay your fine, you eventually end up in jail anyway, right?
Yes, sir. I mean, it adds up and, yes, I mean, it has to be.
So, the fines are gonna take care, I'm telling you, there gonna be some people go to jail for noise. And, you know, it'll be like, "What are you in here for, man? For noise." I'm telling you, I hear it all in the barber shop, trust me, trust me. I know some good kids that keep going to jail for the simplest thing, like turn your music down, dude, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, that's, 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 that's gonna happen. But the other thing, what do we want, this is for me, what do we want downtown to look like? 'Cause when I brag on New Iberia, I brag on all the excitement we got and all of the fun stuff we got. And when I think of downtown, I think of New Orleans. I know we're not Bourbon Street. Then I go and I think of Baton Rouge, you know, downtown Baton Rouge, round the captain. Then I go to Lafayette, and then I come to New Iberia. So, what are we trying to do downtown so I can know?
I can only give, I can only give you my opinion. Why our downtown is healthy is because it's very diverse. You still have lawyers' offices, you still have construction companies, you still have insurance agents, mixed in with some restaurants, some bars. We're beginning to have upper story developments, so families are beginning to live there. So, what makes us healthy, in my opinion, we have less empty buildings than many of those other communities. We're not an entertainment district, and I would not like to ever see that. I think that our diversity is what keeps us strong. The reason we have over forty million dollars in private investment in the last twenty years in downtown, and we do, is because you can buy a building, you can rent it to a restaurant, you can rent it to an insurance agent. There's enough diversity there to make it economically sound. If you just have bars, we passed the ordinance that I wrote as the Mayor Pro Tim, and I still have knots on my ball head because you have to give the neighboring buildings permission before you can do another bar. Lafayette copied that because Jefferson Street was a perfect example. They had bigger buildings than us, multi-story buildings. People were doing loft apartments, they were rolling. And then all of a sudden, it stopped because they had nothing to control the bars and you ended up with nothing but bars on Jefferson Street. And all of that upper story development stopped 'cause you can't live by the noise 'cause Mr. Broussard wants to go to bed. So, with that, it, it doesn't work. So, what keeps us healthy, I find, 'cause we're not a big city. You know, if you do Lafayette, Baton Rouge, New Orleans as a comparison, there's other areas of their downtowns that are quaint like our Main Street and that are diverse. You go on the big places where we go as visitors, where all the fun is, and it is all bars and restaurants and noise and people everywhere. But what keeps us healthy is that diversity, that we are a National Historic District, there are tax credits, we do want investment, but we wanna be as selective as we can not to ruin what we have. 'Cause what we have is really unique, I find. So, that diversity and that mix keeps us healthy. So, to do that, you're gonna have to make a few decisions along the way that are fairly restrictive. But that's how we got to be a National Historic District too. Because if people had tore down, if we had any more intrusions, an intrusion is when a historic building has been modified to the point that it's not historic anymore or been torn down. If we had had any more historic, any more intrusions in our historic district, we wouldn't have been able to be a National Historic District. That's brought forty percent tax credits, that's brought recognition, that brings tourism. So, if you're gonna do that and set up this environment for people to come, we have bed and breakfasts downtown, they don't wanna be disturbed. There's a limit. Yes, you might wanna stay there and go to the bar and go to the restaurant, but once time to go to bed, you wanna go to bed. So, kinda trying to balance all of that, that's the trick. But to balance all of that is what, is what keeps our downtown healthy. It's why we don't have the empty buildings that many other downtowns do, in my opinion.
I appreciate that, Crash Court, sound like you take me back to the megamoment development classes I went to.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I thought one of the things that we wanted to do was, one, keep our young people here, keep millennials here. Millennials don't want the bar to have to turn the music down at ten o'clock. I mean, if you're gonna bring young people into this city, because that's our future. And I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Broussard, I'm fifty-nine years old, and there are times when I go to bed at eight o'clock and I hear that ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, that drives me crazy. However, I also know that the, the, the long-term vision of this city is that we gotta keep our young people here. And if we continue to push them out to Lafayette and Baton Rouge to really enjoy themselves, that's where they're gonna go and live. So, we, it's, it, I agree, it's a balancing act. I'm just saying, I think we do need a noise ordinance. Please don't hear me saying that I don't think we need one. I do think we need one. I, however, I think you have to think about the businesses that are downtown and how you might affect them by limiting it from ten PM to six AM. I'm saying midnight. I'm just saying two more hours. That's all, that's my recommendation, okay?
And when I think, and I'm gonna shut up after this, when I think of Sugar Mill Pond and River Ranch, where we now have sixty families from New Iberia that live in Sugar Mill Pond that left us, quit us, however you wanna put it, well, those families, they don't have bars and they don't have, in other words, that's millennials, that's young people who made an investment to move there. So, some people might want the bars, but you have just as many young people that live in bougie neighborhoods in Broussard and Youngsville. And they don't want that neighborhood, you know, so it's, it's a mix. It's kind of.
It is.
It's, it's, you can't say that all millennials won't wanna be here because we don't have, you know, bars and stuff.
And I'm not saying that.
It's kind of a mix, you know?
Right.
And like I said, it's all a balancing act, and this discussion we have is the best thing we got going. Thank you all.
And not being a millennial, but I, I did live downtown Atlanta.
I know you did, you did, I know.
And, you know, and I'm telling you, I moved down there because I wanted to be in the mix of it.
Yeah.
So, so, so our, on the Main Street, is, it is a neighborhood?
It is. And the more it's a neighborhood, the better off we are.
And I know they got some nice houses there, it's a neighborhood.
They do, they do. Jeff, you had your hand up, I think?
Well, I think the question for tonight is, do you introduce it or not introduce it? And I think everybody wants some form of this ordinance, so it's not a question of whether or not we do it. This was drafted by the city prosecutor, and she was part of the ordinance committee that we talked about it and talked about it and talked about it. So, if you guys have some comments or suggestions or requested changes, she's not, Nicole's not here tonight. I'd like y'all to send them to me or send them to Aaron, and maybe we could forward them to Nicole and see what, what she has to say about it. Because, you know, we, we all want to see this work, but she's the one who's actually gonna have to get it done.
And have to enforce it.
Right.
I used to be enforced finally.
So.
One comment before we end the discussion. She did draft the ordinance and it, it took a long time to do. And the timeline wasn't just for downtown, the timeline was for all over town.
That's right, I know.
So, why would we make an exception for downtown? And everywhere else is, you know, ten o'clock. Because the noise, um, we talking about people next door having a party. I can call the police and say, "Well, look, you know, it's, it's after ten o'clock and it's, it's really on over there. They need to turn it down." So, the police can come in and, and do that. Same thing with downtown, you know? We, it's, it's, should be equal, you know, downtown shouldn't be given more, um, leeway than, than, than the neighborhood.
And you remember, there's three hundred feet.
Yeah.
That's the good point, is that we never talked about that, but you're right, it's three hundred feet. In other words, the officer has to hear it and think it's loud from three hundred feet away. So, that does give some leeway, but, you know, when people are hearing it blocks away, that's a whole lot more than three hundred feet.
But in a mixed-use environment like down, like Main Street is, the bar can be right below you. So, you're gonna hear it. All I'm saying, even if someone's having a party, we're really gonna tell them they gotta turn the music down at ten o'clock at night? I, I think that's being a little unreasonable. I mean, that's just my take on it. You guys, you know, I, I, I may not vote with you, but I get it.
Well, I have another question.
I just. Go ahead. I'm done.
You done?
Yes, based off of what you just said, are people actually calling and complaining about the bars or is it just residential?
Oh, my God, no, man, no, man. We have complaints, I've been here, this is my fifth year, you know, oh, yeah.
Okay.
We have problems where, like during COVID, the bars were all outside, you remember? So, they started putting bans outside, which they could do if they want to. That was a huge issue. We ended up with every bar owner in here and, and had to have meetings with them. That has been an issue. So, the bars have been an issue. I get calls for bars all the time that I do try to tone down because they are trying to make a living. But, uh, 'cause I do have some people that would shut them down at any term, you know, and never let them be open. But yes, that, that has definitely been one of the issues. Hasn't been the only issue.
Okay.
We have a couple of audio companies, more than one, that put stereos in and put stuff in, and they're a big problem. We have some mechanic shops and some truck shops, and, and they have been a problem. But the bars have definitely been a problem. We've also had private parties that have been out of control and have been a problem.
But it's not like the bar.
We have a church, we have a church, and look, it's coming back. The church is coming back, and I'll be the most unpopular man in, in town, you know? But we have a church that we've had many issues of noise complaints about.
But bars would be the only business that's open. But bars would be the only business that's open past ten PM, correct?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't affect the audio companies because they have normal business hours, right? Or am I making that up?
Some people that aren't operating under normal business hours, which is part of the problem, which is part of this petition that they're operating, you know, very late at night.
Oh, okay.
We also have one on the other side of town that for some reason it's ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night and they, and they decide to let it rip.
Okay, gotcha, that's, that's hard to make a clarification.
This is long overdue, but it's been a lot of work to do it. Because the big picture is we need something that the city court is willing to address, that the police department can hang their hat on, that the city prosecutor is willing to prosecute. So it has taken a little while and we've looked at many communities and tried to take our time to get it right because we're gonna ruffle some feathers.
Right.
At the flip side, it's something that's needed, and, and I know it's needed because of the many complaints that my office receives and that various council people bring to me. So it's something that's long overdue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you and Ash, and then Mr. Broussard.
Me, or the mayor?
No, you go, mayor pro tem, I'm sorry.
So one quick, I read through the ordinance and, and, okay, maybe, maybe I missed it. But if an organization files for a special event permit, i.e. Mardi Gras parade.
Doesn't give them any exception.
That's what I'm asking.
No.
So, I mean, so Mardi Gras parade comes to town and it lasts till eleven o'clock, what you gonna do, shut down, give tickets to all the floats?
No, but a Mardi Gras parade is cosponsored by the city usually, as are all of the functions. And they're not till ten, that we have a meeting, we talk about it, there's police, there's security, there's insurance requirements. So it's a ticketed or approved event by the city. And it doesn't run to, we make an exception for the sugarcane festival when they put bans? Yeah, I guess we do. Uh, but you can't just come and pull a permit and our law enforcement, the chief is very wise when he got here, and he says, do not let, we don't let a private person come and pull a special events permit. Because then they think, I have a special events permit, the city has said I can do whatever I want. So from the beginning, because before the chief got here and before he had a police department, we, we probably did make some mistakes. But what we do, if you're a bar and you're having an event on your own property, which does happen pretty often, they love to call and always call it filing their flight plan. They try to come and say, give me a special events permit, so that when you're gonna, when someone complains later and you're gonna send a police officer, they can say, oh, well, the city, the city permitted me. So we cut that back and we do not permit, you can't get a special events permit on private property or like a business who's trying to make money with it because then we want to cover those same ordinances and make sure those ordinances are in effect. But technically, or any other way, we have fairs and festivals, Gumball Cook-Off, sugarcane festival, you know, those people, what's that, sir?
Mardi Gras balls.
Mardi Gras balls, you know, those things we're gonna let happen. If they get completely out of hand, well, that's another issue, but we're gonna have to have some discretion with that, or then we have no events in our town. You have to allow for, you know, a, at least those type of.
Friday night football games?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going ticket a football game because the crowd got too loud. Uh, those things, you know, we have to have some common sense with this.
We're gonna have those questions asked to us.
We are, we are. But we can't be, you know, so much so on this that we, we don't be a community anymore. I mean, you know, we have opened up and created more fairs and festivals and more things. Since I've been here, we continue to do that because that makes us a community.
Answer my question.
Yes, Jeff.
Well, I think we ought to write that in the ordinance.
I, I do too, that's my suggestion.
Well, there you go, good, good, good.
Cause I was thinking those softball games at the new, uh, Kadena Park, if they're having a tournament that weekend. You know, and they got people out there playing, they're gonna be making a lot of noise, it could be after ten o'clock.
I think that we need to think this through, uh, because it is much more stringent. On the flip side, you know, you can't make an exception for everything because then we don't have a noise.
If you have a fatal dove, I can hear that at my house.
Yeah, I heard him out, I live a mile, I live a mile, I live the same distance as you.
Yeah.
Mile, mile and a quarter, and I hear it.
We need to clarify that, I think.
I, I think you're right.
I, I do think you're right.
Perfect example, Chris Jordan. Perfect, Chris Jordan shut his business down on the top floor, perfect, perfect example. Lot of money going to waste right there, we can use, you know? It's hard to talk about a lot of this, and Didi, we have a, we have to have a happy medium somewhere. But it has to be some relief for even the older people in town. They have to have some relief.
And I agree, Mr. Broussard, I'm just saying, ten o'clock seems early.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what, we have a couple of choices. We can vote on this tonight, knowing we're gonna amend it just to move it on, okay? So that we could adopt it at the next meeting. And this is just one suggestion. And we could come up with, we can do it tonight, I got all night. Or we can, uh, I mean, this is our game time, this is what we do. We can flesh out ideas to amend it and work on that. Or we can, uh, you know, email them in or whatever you wanna do. But I do realize we're gonna have some amendments, but I, I know we need an ar- ordinance, so I don't wanna put this off indefinitely. We could move it a meeting, or we could move it through to the next meeting. But I do realize, we had some really good discussion and we are gonna have some things to amend. So I'm open to amend it tonight, I'm open to, you know, move it on or whatever you wanna do. Yes, sir?
My thoughts are that, that we move it forward and we, uh, send out amendments to that motion to the council, to the councilwoman, let us flesh it out.
That's what I would like, because then we're not dropping a ball.
And then, then we come back with the discussion, cause I, you know, tonight, we make radical decisions based on emotions maybe, but I think that we, we flesh it out and send it out to the council, my opinion only.
Yes, Jeff.
And maybe Nicole, if she's available, could be at the next meeting.
I'd love her to come. I'd love her to come. But there's no problem with moving it along and then amending it over the next two weeks and then voting, adopting it.
Cause the reason you have a public hearing.
Is to get the feedback.
Is, is to fix things if you need to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like some ideas if we come up before the next meeting, just so we can review.
I would too. I would too, cause this discussion's been good and we, we have some things to tweak, definitely.
Yeah.
Is there any more, or do you want to, uh, vote to move it along, knowing we're gonna amend it?
Make a motion, we move, we vote to move along.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by the mayor pro tem, Ricky Gonsalana, a second by councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any other further discussion? Yes, wait, Dustin, you have something?
Okay, being that we voting, we made a motion to move it along, is there another motion that have to be put in place for amendment later in the future? Or, cause what's gonna happen is.
Well, I don't wanna speak for Jeff, but I think the process just lets us amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have a public hearing and then somebody makes a motion to, um, to adopt it in a certain form.
Next time, that'll come in the next.
Yeah, next meeting.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Then please vote your machines. And I can't thank y'all enough, this has been some really good discussion. Thank you. All right, five B.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance confirming the abandonment and revocation of the dedication of Second Street between Melane Street and Pershing Street and to set for public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by councilwoman Deirdre Reed and a second by councilwoman David Broussard. Uh, Jeff, you wanna explain this one?
Yeah.
It's been kinda out in the wind a long time.
Cause it's a weird one.
It is. Yeah, the whole meeting's weird. We good.
Yeah, there's a, there's a process that we follow when we abandon a street. And when we do, when we abandon a street, uh, we say we don't need it for public purposes anymore. It goes through planning and zoning, it comes to the council. And the street is divided so that each landowner on each side gets half the street.
Okay.
So that's how we get rid of, uh, streets, and it's a particular statute, title forty-eight, seven, ten, I think it is. Uh, this process clunks through and then the council finally votes. I was contacted about this because apparently in nineteen eighty, there were some neighbors who came to the city and asked that a particular street be abandoned, Second Street between Melane and, um.
Pershing?
Pershing. And it went through planning and zoning, it was recommended, it came to the council, the council actually voted, but they never got the ordinance done. The street is gone. It's, 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 it's.
There is no street.
Yard, it's, it's a green space. But I was asked for, for, uh, the attorney who represents one of the folks said, look, for title purposes, can we get the city to formally recognize that this vote took place and this street was abandoned in nineteen eighty? So that's what this is.
Okay.
But we need to introduce it, public hearing and adopt it. So step one is introduction.
Is there any discussion on this item? I know, wait a second, I guess, and let Ricky come back so he can vote on it as well, so she just pause for a second.
And I think, I think I gave you copies of the old stuff from nineteen eighty.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read it, I was like, still don't know what this means.
I know, that's why I said, Jeff, I'm just calling on you.
It's unfinished business is what it is.
And then I wrote by there and I'm like, I have no idea what's going on.
Yeah, I know, I know. What's your grasp? Nothing's there.
Yeah, yeah.
And if Didi don't know what's going on, none of us know.
We got an issue, man, we got an issue then, we got an issue then.
That's the part that, that goes by, um.
That's what I was gonna ask, Ms. Laidbetter.
The Bryant's house?
Yeah.
That's never been a street.
Where, where is it, Ms. Laidbetter? That's the part I'm trying to.
Yeah.
That's the Bean White.
You know where, um.
Juggernaut was?
Yeah, right there, going straight towards Pershing.
Right.
Going towards Pershing?
Yes. It's, it, we thought it was somebody's yard, but it, it used to just be kinda like a wooded area, people used to pass through. I used to pass through there, cause that's where, I used to live on Melane Street.
Okay.
And that was the way to go to junior high.
All right, the store, that's the store on the side of where, and I'm saying Juggernaut, cause that's what we called the Juggernaut store. That, that was Second Street, right? What, what's the name of that street?
In the front of his.
So there's another part of Second Street?
Because it's, it look, it's right next to his mama's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, it's, it's all grassy and it's always been that way. And there was a, a white brick house, there's a white brick house that's been burnt there too.
Mm-hmm.
If I wouldn't, if I hadn't been there, grew up there, I wouldn't know where the street was.
Exactly.
No, you wouldn't, you, it's.
I rode by, it just looked like a yard to me.
It's a yard, yeah, it looks like a yard, but everybody used to use it as a pass-through.
Right.
Well, I waited for you to come back, Ricky. Uh, last one more time, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines and move it on. Thank y'all very much. Madam Clerk, five C.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of New Iberia and Department of Public Safety and Corrections for Police Radio Interoperability and to set for public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, Ricky Gonsalana, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this five B item?
I just have one question, Mayor. Are they performing a service? It didn't seem like they're just moving equipment. I didn't see where they were performing a service.
Basically moving equipment, from what I understand, yes.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else have anything? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Now we go to five D, Madam Clerk.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance approving budget allocations for the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia and to set for public hearing on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by, I think, uh, who made the motion? Councilman Warren Lewis and a second, I think, uh, Councilman Swir. All right. Been a long meeting, but this is what I've been waiting on to get to. This is, this is something really good. This is, this is a big meeting and a, a, a big issue for all of us. Madam Clerk, can you pull up the, uh, if it's okay, I would like to quickly, cause this is really important. This is the nine point four million that we received from the American Rescue Plan, from President Biden's package. Uh, the first money, first phase, we have the money for now. Uh, we are waiting on some information that won't be out till probably April for some of the items. So some of the items have to wait a little while, some of them can start once we finish this ordinance process. Then at the end of next year, we receive the next money, which we'll still be implementing our first phase. So that doesn't mean the second pha- phase will start immediately. Many of the projects just kinda carry over or continue with another phase. Some of them are new. But as I go through it, I'll kinda try to even give you a basic timeline of when I think things are gonna happen because you can't tell the community, we're doing this and they not know, you know, when we're getting to it. So if you'll give me, I'll just kinda read through it. Our first item on phase one of the five point two million is nine hundred fifty thousand to purchase a new ladder pump truck. This helps us, it's not the only thing we need for our, to maintain our fire rating. Our existing truck is forty-three years old, actually it's probably forty-four years old now. Well, this money, we will spend quickly because it's actually out of the American Rescue. The Treasury Department gives you a way to calculate your losses and take so much out of it. So this project, we decided was very important and we needed to get it ordered because, as you know, everything is a long delivery. We really wanna get this truck. So that truck, the fire chief is already working on shopping, we're already negotiating, we're already looking at trying to get it as economical as you can. So that will move quickly, that'll be something that will happen in January. The next one is to add on to the splash pad at the West End. We promised when we put the splash pad in, it had a nice little pad, but it didn't have anything that showed, okay? Yes, kids play on it and it's cool, but, you know, this three hundred thousand dollars can actually give us some big pieces. We add on two more little semicircles and we get some big pieces that people see, that kids get excited about, that they know they're on a playground and they're playing and they're getting wet. And the whole community can see that we actually did something. Because the first phase of it is just a slab when it's not running, even though it was all the piping and all the structure, it didn't look like anything. So that's another project that, I'll be honest with you, I just cut it out the herd and just said, I wanna move on that. So that's one that to me is overdue, that we promised a second phase and I didn't have the money till now, well, I keep my promises, so this is our second phase. So that's another project that will happen quickly. We will release the architect to do the design work in January and then go through our normal process. Uh, purchase of a oil and water separator. Okay, now we're on to American Rescue projects. That one, we have all these different categories of how we can do this. I will stop and publicly thank Erin right now, cause she has spent months fooling with this. Her and I have worked on this quite a lot, but she has spent months researching, talking to the state lawyer for the auditor's office, going through, as I did too, the hundred and forty-four pages of the Treasury Act and then every other piece of information that, that has come down since then. So a lot of work is going into this. The oil and water separator is something that we need through MS four and it's mandated, and we definitely need that to come up to code. So that's a project that we will do through this. I'll hire the engineers and we will start that project fairly quickly. Uh, that's not one that I have to wait for some of the information. The next one is to purchase a street sweeper, okay? Because of the litter and the increased litter and some clean water protection, we'll be able to do that. That's one that will not be that long, I would say, you know, February, March, we could order that. It'll be a long delivery item, though. The next one is the million-dollar sewer grant match. We should actually know by the end of the month, if we are parlaying, cause y'all are smart, the one million dollars to get five million dollars, okay? And take off with our projects. Let's just say that we don't get, then this one million will go to various sewer projects around town. But unfortunately, the one million dollars will not fix some of our big issues. We need to, so pray we get the five million. We've paid our engineers, they're working on it, Domeg and Zabo, they've turned it in. We've agreed to match thirty percent instead of twenty percent, and that's why it's a little over a million that we really need to try to help our chances, that, that in- increase our points. The next one is drainage. Now, we don't even have the drainage package to apply for yet, but our engineers are waiting to get it. Once we have that, they talked about January, February, we'll apply. But that money, if we don't get it again, well, then we'll allocate it to drainage projects. But again, we're trying to parlay one million and turn it into five million. The next one is one block at a time. This is a very innovative program that we are spending four hundred and fifty in this round to actually make some repairs to houses in low-income areas. And remember, this whole package is set up, for the most part, to handle tourism, to handle green, okay? And there are some things that New Iberia is going green on and is doing that we've never done before. It also does work in low-income areas. So we tried to hit all of it. You'll see through the whole thing, we've tried to do clean water, we've tried to do a little bit of everything so that the whole community wins off of this. So we haven't fleshed the program out. I had one interview with a consultant, I'm gonna have another interview with her.[1729.41] I think she might be our person. We are gonna follow a lot of USDA rules because they have kinda fleshed this out. But this is very novel for the city of New Iberia to take applications. To, we will have to set up a committee, to weed through a committee and come up with who we can help. There'll be some people that their houses unfortunately are too foregone to help. There'll be some people that will want way too much. So it's not gonna be easy, but man, what an opportunity. We promised that this term, we would get into the neighborhoods. What a way we are getting into the neighborhoods.
Yes. This is exciting.
Yes. The next one is where we address blight. We also call it One Block. And look, in One Block at a Time, we are hoping that the community, that this is a catalyst, that they go further. That once we fix up a few houses, we do a few things, we're gonna try to stick to exteriors, that will actually kinda be a catalyst for neighbors to actually improve theirs as well. We're finding ways for the police to plug in while we're doing it. I mean, we're gonna take this and really try to reach our community. The second one, where we're addressing blight, I envision that we are going broke picking up tires. We are going broke picking up empty lots. Pelicans has a contract per household. They're not, they're not gonna pick up what's on empty lots. It's not a household. We are trying to hit commercial blight and to run around and clean our town with some of this money that we think we can equate it back to clean water, back to litter abatement, those kinda things. Boys and Girls Club, very excited about this. This first $90,000 will give us, we pledged $50,000 for them to go to the West End. That's still on the table. We still will do that. This 90 will help renovate their space to do that. And any group, remember this, any group we have down, they're not getting money. We're still responsible. My name, your name is still on it at the end of the day of how we spent the money. So when we partner with a group, they're gonna come up with a project. We're gonna join venture on the project and agree with it, but we're paying for everything. We'll follow our normal procedures because remember, anything over certain amounts, we have to get three prices. You know, there's a whole process. We can't deviate from that process just cuz we got this money from the federal government. So Boys and Girls Club will be improvements in the teen side of the West End. The next $90,000 is called Neighborhood Investments. What I envision, we have three active neighborhood associations. We have WACNA, which is our oldest. We have Little Brooklyn and we have the Ann Street. So what we're gonna do.
Downtown Neighborhood Association.
Downtown, thank you. I wanted, thank you for getting the name right. What we're gonna do is have meetings, and I'm gonna probably start those meetings before we can spend the money. We can't spend the money again on that. That's some of the ones that have to wait till we get some other information that's generated from the census. But what we can do is start talking to these groups about what they wanna do and kinda flesh that out so that when we can spend the money. But that money will go, again, where it belongs, in the neighborhoods, kind of rewarding those areas that have come together to improve their community. So that's, that's exciting. The next one, we have $50,000 for business development grants. Well, I don't plan on going to these giant businesses that are successful and things are happening. This is for startup or maybe that they're not startups, cuz I don't wanna take too many chances, but they're businesses in economic areas that need a boost. So what I'm looking to do, excuse me, is to find those small businesses in those struggling communities where they are disproportionately impacted and help them. So that money will go to business grants. But I'm thinking to have some fun, okay, and it's all us, that we make it kind of a competition. We make it where they have to apply. We make it, and when I say "we," I think it should be the council. We make it where we select some of these people, but it's not just a giveaway. And it has to be something that we feel they're gonna get some benefit out of it, and the community's gonna get some benefit out of it. The next one, we have $100,000 for the PD for anti-violence programs, and we are researching where we can plug in the PD. There can't be spent on equipment, can't be spent on any law enforcement activity, a real police activity. We can't spend the money on that. I thought we could and I had hoped to buy equipment and all. Can't do anything like that. So it has to be outreach. It has to be some program, but we're gonna get creative with that. We don't quite have the answer yet, but what a way to help us fund our community policing. The next one is a litter education program. We have $50,000 pledged for that and we will take some steps for that. And the last one is just administrative costs. They're really big at the flat at the end, but this is, could be. Any way you see administrative costs, it could be engineers, it could be architects, or it could be the staff we're hiring. Kevin has gotten assistant. Erin's assistant comes on next week. And Jane will get an assistant because over the next four years, the amount of paperwork to pull all this off. If we had taken the route that was the easiest route and done sewer, broadband and water, we would be so easy and so lazy till it's not even funny, okay? We didn't choose that route. We are creating projects that enhance our town. But it makes a whole lot more paperwork for all of us and really, really puts a burden on a lot of people. So that's why I need money to be able to hire people to help us with this. So that's the first phase. Second phase, we have another $450,000 from One Block at a Time. The, we have another 150 for the commercial blight. We have the last 90 for Boys and Girls Club. We have another 90 for the Neighborhood Investments, which are our neighborhood associations. We have 100 for business development grants. We figured that the small amounts in the top part, we get our system fleshed out. The bottom half, we could, we could move quicker. We have $470,000 for Bank Street improvements. Now, we have to be creative with these improvements. We might do a walk trail, but it has to be a green walk trail. So instead of paved asphalt, it might be like those diamond-shaped grass pavers that let the water flow through and eat in drainage. We can change lighting to LED lighting, which is saving the planet, saving our utility bills. We can do green spaces, but we'll have to be creative that when we say we have $470,000, we can't just say, "We're going do whatever," okay?
Right.
But we'll work that out. We have $100,000 to finish up the police program. We have the other 50 for the litter program.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You forgot to mention the other 300 for the West End.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. We have 300,000 for West End. You know, again, we talked about a walking trail. We talked about LED lighting. We talked about, you know, those improvements that fit the green space, but still allow us to, to do some things that we need in our parks. Thanks for that. Then.
Get the partnership.
We did litter. Okay, partnership, this is a cool one. We have $100,000 to partner with the Technical College. I haven't even talked to them yet, but I can't believe they're not gonna want $100,000, okay? And what we envision is, we're gonna sponsor some kids if we're gonna get us some training. You know, it's all about jobs. Kids don't know how to build anything. So if we have some kids interested in carpentry, interested in welding, you know, those kinda things, I will begin with the school, but I wanted you to approve the concept.
We add transportation in there, too, because that's part of the problem.
And you know what? You're right, because kids can't get there.
Yeah.
Maybe 10,000 of the 100 is gonna go to, not to the school, but to transportation.
Yeah.
You're exactly right. Hopkins Street, green space. I waited till later that we were making improvements. Things were happening. That's an Economic Development District. The beginning of it is in our Historic District. I would like to uplift that area with some kinda, it has to be green space again, LED lighting, drainage, things that, that fit under that green-type philosophy. Okay, then we have the restroom and the stage for the Steamboat Pavilion because we'll get letters from all of our tourism industry. So I've already talked to some, The Shadows, Conrico. I need to talk to Kane River. I will hit all of our shops and businesses cuz I need them to back this up, okay? What this allows is, we have a bathroom back downtown. We no longer have to set the stage up at, inside the Steamboat Pavilion. That picks us up probably 150 more people under there so that we can get up to 400 or 500 people and end the design with the new visitor center we have going now. If you go look at it, that was the old bathroom. You see, we'll have room for displays and then you see these steps going up. What we'd be able to do very cheaply, one set of police barricades on one side, one set on the other. The stage is where the parking area is now behind it. So the bathroom would be built. The roof of the bathroom will be the stage, and then it'll have a little roof on it. Now we get the full capacity of the Steamboat Pavilion, a little connector that gets you to the stage. But what that does is, you throw a few barricades up, now we can do ticketed events. So let's just say that we wanna do, one, that we get a hot band and we charge money, okay? And we run this and we make money. I don't wanna make a profit. You know what I wanna do? I wanna pay to do two or three more on that money that we made. So it's a way, oh yeah, we'll follow the noise, isn't it? But there's a way.
That's what I'm saying.
That's your exception, right here.
That's an exception. But there is, that is a way. We're not gonna have a civic center, okay? That's not something that's gonna happen in this administration. I really don't see that. But what we can do is begin to host events, be able to do bigger things that the whole community can enjoy. So I think it can become something really good. The next one is this return of lost revenue. I have 90,000 sitting that, and we get to take that calculation every year. So any money we can take out of this, I'm not saying we're not gonna do it. We would just take the project out of the red tape program. So we have 90 right here that if something's giving us trouble or as we see, oh my God, it's a lot of red tape, we have 90, we could move and just do something immediately. And that calculation every year could free up some other money. Then the last one, the big number, $900,000. That is the rest of the architectural fees, rest of the labor, rest of anything to pull this off. But that is also my contingency. You cannot do, as you see with all the grants and the projects we're doing, they always uncover something that was hidden conditions. There's always some kinda, especially late, there's some kinda material upcharge. I was not gonna commit all of the money to where, when we had a hiccup, we were now looking at it saying, "We gotta take it out of the general fund to cover something."
Right.
So that gives us a little bit of reserve. Now, in starting this, do I think that everything is gonna go off without a hitch? Of course not. But we can reallocate if we need to. We can revisit if we need to. We have to document all of that. And remember, for all of these things, like when we go into a neighborhood, when we're gonna do bank park for instance, okay? Someone's gonna go and photograph all the houses in the area, photograph the area, go to a map, check the census tract, make sure that we can justify that we spent that area in an economically depressed area, in an area that needed uplifting. But we're gonna have to do that every house we do. Every project has so much documentation that it is ridiculous. But that is why, when Erin has talked to people with the state, when I've talked to other mayors, they're not doing this. They are just taking the simple way out, fixing their infrastructure and running. This is a way you change a town.
Right.
This, to me, is a way that we keep our promise when many of you from the last council voted to approve the master studies. Let me spend that money. And we did the neighborhood master studies that got in the neighborhood. We promised people, not only are we gonna worry about downtown, that's an important part, we worry about the whole town. This helps us get in the neighborhoods and help us fix some environmental issues and kinda puts us that we're on a better playing field of doing things out of diverse and green and that we're kinda meeting some of the challenges that we've been falling behind on. So that's kind of a general overview of where we are. We'll pass this ordinance if you choose tonight in the next meeting. And then that gives me by January, some things I can start working on and moving on and as soon as we have the rest of the census information. But that doesn't mean we can't start fleshing out what we're gonna do, cuz we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
And any one of you that wants to serve on, you see the project, pick the ones you're interested in. There might be a few of them we all have to fool with, but pick which ones you're interested in. I need you to be involved. These are all going to all of, you know, every corner of the city. So we need to pull together and kind of work on this as a team because it's, it's gonna take all of us. It's a lot of work. So I'll open it up to comments and questions and I leave anything out? Okay, thank you.
I guess a suggestion. For the NIPD anti-violence program, you say you didn't really know what to do with it?
Well, you know, I don't wanna just do Dare. That's, that's way overdone. Our cops don't really think that Dare is a program, but I have to find programs.
What about like a self-defense class for those who?
I might be able to do that. That might be one. That might be one. And I'm open to suggestions. I'm not sure, you mean for the community, for our citizens?
Yeah, absolutely.
We could probably maybe do that. We can't do anything, it's worded very strongly by the, I wish I knew the wording, but it basically says something like, "Nothing to further," almost, it's, it's, they're against at police actions, basically. It's worded very sternly that, you know, you're not gonna do anything that's crime-related. So, but that, that might be a good one. And that wouldn't be that expensive.
How about also introducing the little sheriff's kind of program? I can't remember the name of it.
Kinda talked about that, and that's one that the chief was talking about, that we could have like a little camp.
Yes.
And they could get to know the officers and kinda go through a little mini. We are looking into that. That's, that's been one of the suggestions.
Excellent.
And see, I'm gonna come back to you. Every one of these items, I gotta come back to you. We follow our normal process. So every one of these, we'll get an opportunity to pass a resolution, to talk about it. If it's big money, that has an ordinance, so.
Do you want feedback? Like if you, like a bucket of money like this where there's not a definitive plan yet, do you want us to not only tell you which ones we're interested in, but give you some suggestions on what might be included?
Yeah, and some of them I might have fleshed out, but I know some of them, there's, it's open. I mean, there are many, like the police is a great example that, yes, no, I want that feedback.
Okay.
We in this together. It's our community, you know?
Yeah, even like the litter program? I mean, if we had some ideas about?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. You know, I'll show you my discussion items.
I can't wait to see that.
Some signs that are coming up. We'll do that in discussion item, but yes, definitely.
Okay.
Sir.
So I see you have, you know, $400,000 for the Boys and Girls Club in the West End.
I have 90 and 91.
Oh, nine, because 300, 300 Hopkins Street. Okay, so, so are we gonna initiate slumps on to the Boys and Girls? Let them allocate it?
No, sir. They are going to, the first 90 is gonna fix up the space. So I've already met with them. I will meet with them again, cuz I'll be ready to go on that pretty soon and say, "Okay, you know, these are the improvements we talked about. These are repairs we talked about." So the first 90 will probably, we already pledged 50. The 50 just goes into their coffers for coming. I can't, I can't say that I'm, we already pledged that to get them over that. The 90 will help us improve our space. The second 90, if their space is improved enough, it might be that they say, "We need computers." Or "We need this program that we found, but it costs $20,000 to buy what we need." It might be something like that, but we will purchase it. We will document and we have to make sure it fits the bill. If it's something that doesn't fit, Boys and Girls Club is a pretty easy one to partner with because their whole mission fits the mission of the American Rescue. But we will take that one step at a time. But whatever we do for them or any other organization runs through us, runs through our bid process, and we pay for it. Or we're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
Mama thought.
And the problem is, you spend it wrong, you gotta pay it back.
And I don't know where it fits in, but I just think that, that money, any monies that we can put into depressed areas through recreational activities i- is a win-win. And I see Heather sitting back there. So Heather, you need to brainstorm and see where we can fit, cuz I think you look at any publication or look at any media outlet that, you know, if you can supply efficient recreational activities for depressed areas, it goes a long way.
Just like we have 300,000.
I'm not sure where you wanna go with that.
And when you think of the parks, our capital outlay that we put in was all parks. So if you notice, for this year, I didn't spend money in parks, cuz we're gonna be getting money from the state.
Right.
The next year, I might not say I'm not gonna, but we could ask for something else from the state and we had money spent in the parks. But you take, take West End. It might be, you might find a program that we go and track down professional athletes who are from New Iberia and we might pay them to come into town and run a little program. Or, you know, even if it's a, you know, a one-week camp or something. Those kinda things we can document and say, "We're getting these, these, you know, these pro guys in that the kids will be impressed with and we're following a program." Now, the downside of all of this, just remember that, we have to keep records and we have, whatever we start, we have to do for six years, but we only have money that we're supposed to spend in four years. So some of this will have some bleed over that we might, well, if we started a summer camp and we did that every year, well, you can plan on, we'll have to do it two more years. But if it's successful and it's working, they don't really tell you at what level you have to do. And I'm not saying maybe we wouldn't cut it back cuz we don't have as much money, but we have to make an effort and keep records. This whole thing, in a way, is kind of a social experiment.
Right.
Which is kinda cool.
Yeah. It's exciting.
Anybody else?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve.
No, I was just gonna say that I think the way it's divvied up is fair. It hit all areas of our community.
That was what we tried to do, you know, was, was give everybody something so we all felt included and that we, we could make some changes.
And I, I don't wanna be funny, but I thought it and I just, but only, cuz you were saying that the, the police thing, you said they, they used some very strong words.
Yes.
And I know I'm kinda silly, but I'm serious. They're basically saying, "We don't need y'all buying guns, handcuffs."
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Yeah, that's how they said it.
That's pretty much what they said.
Let Erin kinda explain that.
So the whole basis behind this is this is a coronavirus relief package and it's supposed to go into the communities to try to fix what COVID broke. So the disproportionately affected areas in the community would have taken COVID and lockdowns and being stuck at home and not being able to go here and there, it would have hit them harder. And it's documented, and it says this in the interim rule, that it's documented that there was an uptick in drug abuse and an uptick in violence. So the programs for the police, it's not, okay, we're gonna give you the money to go out in the community and arrest everybody. We're going to give you the money to catch it before it happens. Put, put some programs in place.
Drug intervention would be ideal.
Violence intervention.
And, and we have thought about some drug intervention, you know?
But it must be like existing certified programs that are documented to work.
Yeah, we can't, I can't make a, I can make up a whole lot of program, but I can't make up a police program.
Right.
Like I said, we don't think we wanna do Dare because that's not what we wanna do, but we will, we are looking for some programs that, and I did find the little junior cop program or whatever, so. Any other discussion?
I make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act as presented.
All right. I got a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, a second by Councilman Lewis. There's nothing further? Please vote your machines. It's exciting.
Very exciting.
This made up for the first part of the meeting. And I'm just saying, right now, I apologize for losing my temple, but you know, it is what it is.
Half of us.
Yeah, you would. All right, Madam Clerk, please hit us up, five E.
Introduction of ordinance number 2021-25, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of immovable properties fronting 20 Arpent Road and Ann Streets for the purpose of creating Ann Street Park and to set for public hearing on December 21st, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deed Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. I'll go ahead and explain this one. This is a piece of property on the corner of 20 Arpent and Ann Street that we have negotiated a deal with and would like to buy to do a future part. This is the money that we sent in. This is the money that we sent in, Marcus, Beau, Blake, all of our, Fred Mills, all of our delegation is working on this with all the other projects that we put in, but this is one that would be, we called it Anne Street Park when we sent it in, and we think we can get money for this. This would end up being a park that's dawned to dust, that would have a fence around it, it would be locked every day, it'll be a basketball court, a little bit of exercise equipment, and a little bit of playground equipment. So we've negotiated, which we think is a really good deal, to buy the property. What I'd like to do is buy the property now, there is a, a house to be torn down, and then we'll just sit on it until we get money. So we're not promising that we're going to build this immediately. We have the same thing, where we have a piece of property, it'd be coming to us, donated on, uh, Henry Street, that we will be doing a little park there that's kind of close to Little Brooklyn area, but the same thing, we're going to take the building, or take the property, hold it, we're trying to expand our footprint in areas of town that we don't have a park. I'm sorry you ride down Anne Street, it's not my fault, it's not any of your fault, the city has no presence on that really long street.
That's right.
There is nothing. So we've tried to pick a few areas where we could do these small little pocket parks, make a difference to the community, uh, but take it one step at a time. I'm not promising that, you know, I don't want anybody on Anne Street to, to say, you know, where's the park? The park's coming as we get the funding.
Right.
We purchased the property, yes, we'll have to cut the grass, but we purchased the property, we hold with that until the funding comes from Baton Rouge. So this is, uh, to purchase the property. So any questions, comments?
Oh, no, this is awesome, man. I can't wait to see it, I didn't know, I thought it was going to come up faster, and then it's dusk till dawn?
Yes.
Oh, like, basically it's going to be operable during the daylight hours.
That's exactly right.
Correct.
That's a good way to get it off the ground.
It is, it is.
And there won't be any parking, so it's not like it's a place where people kind of pull up and hang out, you got to come to the park, you got to go through the gates to use the facilities, and you have to leave.
It's designed to stop a lot of pro... I can tell you, years and years ago, as a volunteer, out of my pocket, I built Funk Johnson Park. Just went over there with my friend Bob Watney, and went to Coleman's and went in at night, when it was open at night, and said, hey, what y'all think about a park? And we did some drawings, and the mayor at the time, who I really admire, Cliff Oakley, told me not to do it, and I did it anyway, and so, out of my pocket, we built a little park. What, I was young at the time, it was not planned out, and the city never really bought into it. So it became a hangout, and became an area that we ended up having to get rid of, okay? Knowing that in some areas, you got to do things differently, and you got to think them all the way through. Like I said, as a young man, we went off hefcock. So this is a park that is dusk till dawn, that is controlled, that will stop, you know, activities that we just can't have in a little pocket park, and when you have a pocket park like that, you don't have a community center. What I learned over time, it's not the neighborhood, it's more the oversight.
Right.
So if you don't have a community center that employees are there, if you have a little park that, it's for that neighborhood, but we don't go, we might go there to dump the trash, we might go there to cut the grass, but that you don't have eyes on all the time, it doesn't really matter what part of town it is, it has to be planned out a little differently. And like I said, I, I learned that lesson the hard way, um, so that's the intent of this.
And, and it will be fenced in, so they'll be able to lock it. Um, it, it's coming from that community, I mean, it's been an underserved community for a long, long time, and I think it's really going to help us, or help the Downtown Neighborhood Association with this park coming up and the work that they're doing, I think it's really going to uplift the community, and people begin to feel like, you know, the city's investing in them. And so that's something that's important, we want them to feel like they're part of New Iberia, and that they have to take care of their community, and that the city's right there supporting them by bringing this park to them.
I think all these projects, we invest in the community in the hope that they invest in us.
Right.
But it's a two-way street.
That's right.
Two-way street, you got to start somewhere.
That's right.
So in this instance, you know, we're picking up the ball and making the first move, which I think is unusual, but I think is needed, you know? Because the next thing is, after American Rescue, after these little parks, you know, we, we need investment from them. We need them to buy in, we need those communities to take part.
That's right.
We have meetings that nobody comes to, we have meetings that, you know, we have times that we ask for stuff, you as councilman, how many times do you, you know, try to get a bunch of people together and end up with the same ones? It happens even at all of our events. You can almost predict, depending on the event, I can make the list of who's coming.
Right.
You know, so the more we, we outreach to our community, I am hoping the more we end up with a bigger community.
Well, I will, I will say one thing, that, um, since I've been on the council, um, I feel like I've, I've seen a lot of support coming out of the community for the events that we've put on. I mean, the last event we put on on Hopkins Street was well-attended. Now, I will say that I was the only female, except, well, my little cousin, but, uh, I need some ladies to come and join, it's because, uh, my, my sister, who lives in Monroe, looked at the picture, she said, you're the only woman that went there?
I was, I was bad, but I didn't think of that. I didn't notice that.
Yeah, I was the only female in the picture.
Hey, man, you were just one guy.
Well, she says, there was only one female, one white guy, she said, was that white guy Freddie? I was like, yeah, it was Freddie.
Who's me?
Yeah, but, and so I think that we're at a point where the community's kind of ready.
I do too.
And so I feel like the more that the city, where we put forth the effort, I think we're going to see that response, that positive response we're looking for. At least, I've been very encouraged by what we've seen so far.
Myself. Any other discussion? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines.
Thank you, guys, really, really appreciate this.
Uh, yes, it's, it's, it's big, this whole thing. All right, Madam Clerk, uh, six A.
Ordinance Number 2021-20, authorizing the City of New Iberia to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with respect to economic development projects with the City of New Iberia Economic Development District Number Three, and taking other matters in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by the Mayor Bruton, Ricky Gonslaan, and a second by Councilman Swer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none? And don't leave, we have another meeting. Jason, do you need to speak on this, or are you...
I do not, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, then hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, Councilman's remarks, Brooke, I'll start with you, it's been a long night.
It has been a long night. I just want to congratulate the Westgate football team on launching the state championship game. Uh, if you hadn't noticed, the entire council is dressed in support of you guys.
Mr. Memo.
So we're super proud. Um, also, don't forget to vote this Saturday, we have the city marshal runoff. Uh, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
Yep, I want to congratulate the Westgate Tigers, go Tigers!
Go Tigers.
Uh, in my Ed Orgeron vo- voice, uh, like, like, I, I tried, um, yeah. Man, I want to also congratulate, uh, our very own, and I'm sure, I hope I don't take nothing from you guys, Catholic guy, Michael Desmo.
Yeah.
Got the UL job, I'm a sports guy, so I keep up with all of that stuff.
Local guy, man, that's awesome.
And I support all those people that do well, sports brings people together.
Does.
Uh, I like, I like what's happening in our community as that, as far as that goes. I also want to go ahead on and thank those people that came out and participated to the District Two and District Five, uh, neighborhood cleanup. I want to especially thank, uh, the brothers of, uh, Omega Sci-Fi, uh...
Sons of Kings.
And Sons of Kings, thank you, Sons of Kings, uh, social group, we had a great crowd and a tremendous turnout, and we did great work. Uh, also, I want to announce, uh, we are having, uh, a good friend of mine, my classmate, uh, the owner of Cool Scene, uh, Mr. Ryan Romero came to me a couple of years ago before COVID, and he asked, he said, you know, Marlo, I want to get out there and I want to give back to the community, I see what we're going through, uh, my business is in the community, and I want to give back. So me and Ryan got to, together, and he ended up bringing in, um, Eric Hyke from, uh, Grubs and Menville, Hyke Grubbs, Menville and Dalbo, and then we needed a church, so we went to Zion Hill Christian Fellowship to help us out. We also got some other sponsorship from Bar Check Chiropractor. Uh, we still are taking donations, y'all can get with me, or if anybody knows Ryan at Cool Scene, or Eric Hyke at Hyke, Menville, Grubbs and Dalbo, uh, they got with me, and we're going to do a toy drive at, uh, Zion Hill Christian Fellowship on the corner of Hopkins and Main Street at, um, it's going to be December eighteenth, starts at twelve and it ends at, I think, like, three. Um, I will say this, uh, that's, the church is in Deedee's district, uh, it didn't come out of a district thing, it came out of a friendship thing, but we made sure we included Deedee in there, Deedee's also going to partner with us, because, uh, you know, again, we're just trying to get the kids, put some smiles back on the kids' face. So again, that's December eighteenth, uh, Zion Hill Christian Fellowship, Cool Scene, Hyke, Menville, Grubbs and Dalbo, Bar Check, all helping sponsor to make this event great. December eighteenth, twelve o'clock.
Thank you.
Zion Hill Christian Fellowship.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce Hurd?
I wish, uh, Westgate the best of luck.
Oh, yeah.
Making it to the Dome. And also Lauraville, Lauraville High went pretty high, and lost a close one two weeks ago, so they had a pretty good team too, so I wish everybody luck.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
So I just want to, uh, let the council know that we, we've talked about deprived, our community deprived in our community, and, uh, that each and every one of you that food net tonight was a huge success. I do not have the numbers, uh, I think we exceeded our tonnage from last year. I was able to go out there and donate and talk to a few volunteers, it was a really steady turnout all day long, so we do have food in our pantry shelves, and I think that's important, when people need. So, uh, hats off to that group and those people that worked on. And also, uh, we, we touched on litter abatement tonight a little bit, and, uh, I was on the phone, I am working, Freddie knows about it, I am working on a state resolution currently, uh, trash tires are a problem, not on the passion of the city, so we're trying to come up with a resolution to attach serial numbers on tires to driver's license.
That'd be cool.
And, uh, so it will be a program moving forward, but me and Mr. Bowyer, uh, we drafted some resolution, we're going to take the serial number when you go purchase tires, tag it to your driver's license, so when those tires are disposed in improper location, we'll better track back to the individual that purchased them, and hopefully come up with some kind of, uh, penalty or penalty phase, that way cleans up our drainage, cleans up our towns, and you can't go dump the tires. So that's all in, that, that's all in motion, you know, we still got to work through it, but, uh, I'm proud to say that we, you know, we are moving forward on that. So, more to come on that.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say congratulations to, uh, Westgate Purple, Purple and Gold, uh, wish you, um, all the best of luck in your endeavors on Friday, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Well, just like everybody else, I'd like to congratulate Westgate, really excited for you guys, and, uh, we know you're going to win tomorrow night, I mean, Friday night, today's Tuesday. Uh, the other thing, I just, I want to remind everybody about the Christmas parade, uh, that's coming up this Saturday, please bring the kids out. Um, there's a new, uh, strand of the virus going on around, so you might want to make them wear a mask. Um, there's also on the eighteenth, it's going to be a very busy day on the eighteenth, so not only do we have the toy drive, but there's also going to be, uh, a food giveaway on the corner of Hopkins and Robinson Street, and it's being sponsored by several organizations, including WACNA, I think Marlin, Downtown Neighborhood Association, I mean, there's just so many of them, Bill's Barber Shop, there's just a ton of them, they're getting together and feeding the community, and, uh, so that's going to happen on the eighteenth. And then also, I, there's going to be a lighting, lighting of the park on the eighteenth, the West End Park, uh, and that's by, uh, Raymond Shudu Lewis's, um, foundation, so that's going to happen on the eighteen as well, I don't have as many details, but they're going to light up the park, so it should be really pretty. Um, and, um, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Swer?
Yeah, I got a couple, uh, did it with everybody else, congratulations to Westgate, um, our local, our local team that's going to the Dome, so that's a great thing. Uh, congratulations to Mike Desmo, uh, he is a personal friend of mine, old teammate from back in school, so I'm, I'm proud of him, what he's been able to accomplish there. Um, and that's about it for tonight, thank you.
All right, go Tigers! Uh, my next item, because I got a few, I want to tell you what the NIPD's doing, okay? The NIPD has a Christmas, first time we do this, okay? We've partnered with Westgate, Catholic High, Senior High and Highland. They've been doing a toy drive all this week, so, and some last week. We will pick all the toys up starting the end of this week, and then we have to assemble them, and we already have hundreds and hundreds, it's going to be good, and so one of our police officers is going to be Santa Claus, and the police department is going to go around giving out toys.
Well, that's awesome.
So they are working with some needy families, it's something that's going to happen, uh, those dates are, I think we'll be doing that, we reserved the twentieth and the twenty-first, because we're not sure how many toys we're getting yet. It, it, we already got a load in today and started realizing, okay, this is going to be, this is going to be wild, but I think it's something really neat, it's a way to connect the department with the community, it's the way that families see my police officers as something else besides law enforcement, so that's in the works, and I'm very proud of that, and we're very blessed to have the, the schools partner with us. Um, so that'll be coming, more on that as it's happening. I want to go over these couple of signs real quick, because I think it's fun and needed.[1570.41]